We're going to go ahead and call to order the December 20th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Board meeting. Before we get started, if everybody would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag's back there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we approve the minutes, we have a quorum. To my left is John Baranco, Mary Furtick, and Steve Gannon. To my right, we have Jay Scheckman, Patrick McTeague, Sherry McCartney, and Marilyn Mamanoo. So, and also, we've got our planning staff here with Jim Hetzel, Duane Spence with the City Attorney's Office, and Sherry Wallen with the City Attorney's Office. And then I'll let the other members of the city staff announce themselves when they're presenting. Let's go ahead and get approval of the minutes. I believe these are the October minutes. So if I could get an approval of the October minutes.
Brad just walked in.
I'm sorry?
Brad just walked in.
To my left is Brad Cohen, just moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion. Any discussion before we approve? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. So, real quick, executive privilege, in an interest of having professionals in time and that kind of thing, I'm going to shake up the order a little bit. So it will hopefully move very expeditiously. And we also have one item that has been sent to us for consideration that I'm going to do when we get to the right after case UDP S-23002. So tonight, we're going to start with case number nine, which is UDP T-23009. Give you guys all a second to pull that out. It's the moratorium to the City of Fort Lauderdale's ULDR.
Do you want to do the swearing in first for everyone?
Sure.
Okay, if you're going to...
Anybody?
Go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead, Sherry.
Hi, I'm Sherry. If you're going to talk to the board tonight, can you please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in? Talk to, present, any of that. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I see Mr. Dunkel at the podium, so I will assume that we are ready to begin. Everybody's got their necessary backup with them. Mr. Dunkel.
Good evening. Thank you for being here, and thank you for expediting us on the agenda. We have some volunteer speakers. We're here tonight for you on behalf of... Strike that. For the LPA, to make sure that this moratorium ordinance, proposed moratorium ordinance, is consistent with the comprehensive plan and to make a recommendation or denial of going forward with the City Commission. With that, I've handed out a little cheat sheet on the essential elements of what can be waived, what the requirements are, and so on, so forth, rather than having you wade through pages and pages of material. We'll get right down to it. I've got two speakers and some videos. One is going to be Phil Purcell from Marine Industries Association and Courtney Day from Cape Ann Towing. They have the most intimate knowledge of the navigational hazards which we are trying to address with this moratorium ordinance. And with that, Phil?
Good evening. Happy holidays to everyone. Chair and members of the board, thanks. So I come before you today because...
I'm sorry, sir. Can you state your name for the record?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Phil Purcell with the Marine Industry Association of South Florida. And so I come before you today because when you think of the size and scope of an industry, when you look regionally between Palm Beach and Miami, it's about $18.5 billion industry. When you get into Broward County, it's half of that. It's 9.8 billion. And so when you look at this six and a half miles of river and the yards that go above it, and you watch this tug go up there, that's a 50-meter tug. So a 50-meter tug's going to have an operating budget annually between three and $4 million, between crew maintenance and things like that. That doesn't include when it needs a paint job or other services, engine work, things like that. That happen often at these yards. When you look at yards like that, Lauderdale Marine Center, which is a 65-acre facility, just sold to Safe Harbor in the last couple years for $345 million. So the substantial investments that have been made on this river are getting challenged by choke points that happen. When you look here and stuff near Cooley's Landing, these are choke points that are happening that you cannot safely navigate past that boat if you're going opposite. And remember, boats are tugged based on tide, incoming and outgoing tide, when you get to this size. And again, think of the economic benefit and the workers that work in these facilities. So all we're asking is that we stick to the rules of what the code is, but equally important, look at where the navigational channel is. That should have been established. It's going to be established in terms of setbacks. I'll let everybody else get into that. But the reality is, as you look at this boat transverse the river, and I don't know which tug company was doing it, and Courtney can tell you from Cape Ann, it's a big viable business. When you look at the Fort Lauderdale Boat Show, the reason the Fort Lauderdale Boat Show exists, which shows a billion eight economic benefit to the state and does over $899 million of direct sales over those five days, Courtney will tell you, since the boat show, how busy it's been, just going up and down the river, where people go one way for a few hours, get a tug, put the boat back in the water, get some estimates, do a survey, and then put it back in the water and go the other way. So we just have to make sure, you all know what Little Florida looks like here, too. So we have to make sure that we have the SOPs in place that allow the investments that get made in this river that generate up to a $9.8 billion economic impact, so that we can continue and continue to grow the industry for the benefit of the community. I thank you.
Hang on just a second, Phil. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Purcell before he leaves?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Day?
Is Courtney here?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Good afternoon. My name is Courtney Day, owner and operator of Cape Ann Marine Towing. Supposed to have a video here, but... Oh, here we go. So here we are. We're coming up the river. This yacht here is 165 feet, and with my tug out here, that's 25 feet. And you know, we have maybe 15 feet of line. When we hit the angle on this bridge, coming through here, I have to bring maybe probably 80 feet through before I can turn. Excuse me?
Please speak to him.
Sorry about that.
You can pick it up.
So you can see, well, it's gone by already. And the more encroachment we have on the river, the more difficult it is to get up the river with these big yachts. And years ago, like this big catamaran, you know, when there's a bunch of those on the river, that really encroaches on the turns. But you'll see as we go along up through here. The other video had some really good footage of Little Florida. And now we're waiting at Andrews Avenue. So basically, our spots, when we're able to pass, we're having less and less spots where we can pass. You know, it takes us longer to get up and down the river with these toes, because we have to let outbound traffic come out, and then, you know, we go in, or the opposite of, you know, we're going out and we let the inbound traffic come in. But here's Andrews Avenue. So you can see, this has to swing that way. The stern has to come around here. You know, if there's something over here, I can't swing the stern over there, and it becomes an issue. Yeah, there's some traffic, and you can buy. So we're coming up on the train bridge now. So anyway, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we walk away, Mr. Day, any questions for Mr. Day? I've got one more speaker, since we're hearing speakers, so go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to have... Finish your presentation. Yeah, Steve Witten is the chairman of the Marine Advisory Board. He's going to come up and do a sum-up.
Okay.
And then I and Andrew Kubal will stand by for any questions the board might have.
Understood. Thank you.
I'm Steve Witten, chairman of the Marine Advisory Board for the town of Fort Lauderdale. Thank you very much for the patience, and I'll try to move a little faster, and appreciate the accommodation. So we started working on this roughly 18 months ago, where we were concerned that the new river would be, as Phil and Courtney said, would be choked off by continued construction as well as intrusion as a result of requests for larger and larger boat lifts, particularly perpendicular lifts. About a year ago, we request, we simply need some time to reevaluate what we're doing, to preserve the integrity, not for me and you, but for our kids, grandkids, et cetera. It's becoming more and more difficult to get up the river. One of the issues that we talk about is why now? What's happened now that all of a sudden, we decide that this is what we want to do? And I see a few of you shaking your heads. It's because the new river has shrunk. The beams of boats have gotten wider. Phil talked about the fact that there are rocks in certain areas. We're in the process of getting a new bathymetric study done, so we understand where we can lay over. But we're making it more and more difficult for folks that are truly the lifeblood of our community. John Kelly is the owner of Bradford Marine, and he refers to the new river as the artery to the heart in Fort Lauderdale, and that's exactly how we see it. And I don't know about you folks, but I no longer feel comfortable taking my boat up the river because of the traffic. And the inability of guys like Courtney, who are on the river every day, to have no spots to lay over, makes it more and more difficult. So we've already started planning, and with your blessings, we will preserve the integrity and the navigability of the river. And again, we appreciate the opportunity. We've asked for a one-year moratorium, and again, we've already have the whole process starting. So with your good blessings, I ask, first of all, if there's any questions, and I wish you a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I thank you for the consideration. Yes, sir.
Did you guys put any thought into, you know, further defining extraordinary circumstances that would justify a waiver from the 30% or 25 feet from the dock? I've seen in past requests to the Marine Advisory Board and to the commission that it's not really a defined term, and people can really use any logic to explain why it's an extraordinary circumstance for themselves.
Duane Spence, deputy city attorney. This is a part of the process that they're requesting the moratorium for, so that they can evaluate the code and bring back code amendments. So the moratorium puts a pause on the issuance of additional waivers and allows an opportunity for the planning process to go forward and address those circumstances. So you will be seeing code amendments in the future that will address those types of issues.
Thank you for clarifying. And that is the fact. I mean, we're obviously sensitive to Sunshine laws, so the board has not had an opportunity. Again, with your blessings, we would move this forward. And working with Bob Dunkel and town council, we would have public outreach meetings, et cetera, and happy to report back to you. But we expect that within the next few months, we will have kind of the outline of what we'd like to see with New River. And if you guys don't mind, we'd share some thoughts with you and perhaps get some ideas from you as well. Please.
Chair, I need a little clarification. Okay, a little clarification. The moratorium would be on the granting of waivers. Is that my understanding?
Thank you. Thank you. That's a really important point. Anybody that is in, that would like a building permit, if your dock is in disrepair, as long as you are within the current code, you could do what you want to do.
So if a homeowner wanted to build a dock within the current code?
No issue.
There's no issue. Thank you.
No issue whatsoever. And that's really important to stress. This is also for just the New River, and it is the area on the New River that is on the map that's in front of you. We tried to start, we're starting this at Sospiro Canal, which is marker 10, and heading up to the yards at the west side. One of the points that was made by, I think maybe Phil or Courtney, and was also made by John Kelly, is if we choke off the river, there's 13 businesses up the river that provide a lifeblood to the community that will be out of business. So we really appreciate this. Yes, sir?
I guess what I'm confused by is we're saying that the moratorium is going to prevent any waivers beyond what's currently allowed. But in the actual proposed ordinance in E, it says that the commission may still waive under extraordinary circumstances. So is...
I'll let council address that.
The moratorium addresses 4719.3 sub E. So that would be paused as to the western New River, not as to the balance of the town.
Okay. So 4719.3 E, there will be a moratorium placed on that section?
That is correct. As to western New River.
Western, got it.
Again, not affecting anywhere on the intercoastal, not affecting any canals. Look, there's a big picture here. You know, we all know by 2050, you have to raise your seawalls. If you can't get a large barge or tug down, guess what? It's not happening. And that's one of the main considerations. There's also a couple of large barges that need to get up the river that can barely do so right now. So again, we, and working together with you and the town, we're just asking for a breather, to give everybody a little time to rethink where we are. And again, I thank you very much.
Another clarification?
Sure.
Speaker, microphone, please.
Why are we transmitting anything to Broward County about the change in the comprehensive plan? If this is just a... Am I reading this correctly? It says, recommend that the City Commission approve the application of the audience on first reading to amend the future land use element and map and transmit that amendment to Broward. Why are we doing that if this is a moratorium on zoning? Am I reading from the wrong one?
I honestly don't know. I'm going to have to defer to Jim or Carlene to respond to that one.
I think you may be reading from the wrong agenda item.
11? Aren't we 11? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we're on 9.
So sorry. So sorry. That answers the question.
Boy, I feel so much better. I had no idea what you were talking about. Chairman, anything else?
Yep. Mary?
No, I'm just going to make a motion, so just tell me when you're ready. You're ready? Oh, we have public comment? Yeah, thanks, John.
Do you have a comment or question for...
No, I'm just going to... I'm sorry.
I saw your microphone on. I thought you were ready to say something. If there's nothing else, we're going to go ahead and open this up to the public.
Oh, it's 9. Okay.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to be heard on this matter? Hearing and seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion of this, bring it back to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Can I make a motion?
That would be wonderful.
Thank you. I move to recommend approval of case number UDP T-23009.
Seconds.
Thank you.
Mr. Sh... Was that you?
Do you want to keep reading?
Go ahead.
And the board hereby finds that the text amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Hold my scratchy throat. So this is a one-year term. What happens in a year? Does it come back to us? Is it reopened? Does it just evaporate? I mean, what happens in a year?
Mr. Dunkel.
The way we've handled moratoriums in the past is, we hope to have an ordinance to present to y'all that will implement the solutions to the problems that we're trying to address here. If we don't get it within the 12 months, then we probably come back for an extension. Not suggesting that we would, but, I'm sorry, I'm not suggesting that we need an extension, but that's the way I've seen moratoriums administered in the past.
Okay. Yeah, it does. It does help. But yeah, because I want to be sure that it is for a year and it doesn't drag on.
Okay. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Ms. Furtick. Oh, wait, sorry. Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Ms. Baran... Oh, sorry. Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Mamanoo?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Wayman?
Yes. Congratulations. You got unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, folks. Next item is going to be item number seven on your...
Seven.
...agenda.
Okay, that's seven.
Case number UDP PDD 22003. This is a... Let's, if we would... Steve, I'm going to start down with you for disclosures.
Site visit.
Site visit.
John?
None.
Brad?
None.
Jay?
None.
Patrick?
Site visit.
Sherry?
None.
Marilyn?
None.
None from me either. Thank you. Ms. Chalkus, the microphone is yours. You're going to need to turn it on, I think. There you go.
Am I on? Okay. Good evening. Nectaria Chalkus with the firm Lockery and Chalkus on behalf of Trinsec Residential. They are the contract purchasers of the parking lot that is located at the Westin Hotel over on Cypress Creek. If this project sounds familiar to you, it should. We've come in front of you a number of times on this site. The first couple of hearings, or two or three hearings, I believe we've had, dealt with the land use plan amendment for this site. This was a site that was annexed in from Broward County and retained its county land use and its county zoning. The land use change, the land use amendment was changed... The land use change, the land use amendment was changed to, from residential to mixed use. That was what came in front of you, along with text amendments. There have, this is now the eighth public hearing we've had on this site. Not all of them have been in front of this board. A lot of them were in front of Broward County Commission and the Broward County Planning Council, but this is now the eighth hearing, public hearing, that we've had on this matter. And we've had a number of public participation meetings with some of the residents in the area. In November, this is the first time it came in front of you, was for the land use plan amendment and the text amendment. That was ultimately approved by the City Commission in June of 2023 of this year. And then in September, the last step in the land use amendment process was finalized, and that was the Broward County Planning Council certifying the city's land use or comprehensive plan. So this is the new land use map. It's now mixed use, and we are proposing to change it from R6 and R1C, which are county zoning designations that no longer exist. Those categories are no longer recognized by Broward County. And besides that, we are now in the city of Fort Lauderdale, so we need to bring it under a city zoning category. The category that best implements the mixed use category is the PDD zoning. And so that's what we're proposing to do. The PDD zoning will encompass the existing Weston Hotel, which is on the north end of the site. Does this have a, let me see. Yeah, I don't know if you guys can see the pointer, but anyway. So the hotel will remain as is. It's 14 stories, 298 hotel rooms, with some ancillary restaurants and meeting space. And then the new section, which is going over the parking lot, will include a new 10-story parking garage that'll house the parking for the hotel and for the new residential, total residential units that are proposed, or 340 residential units in a 12-story building. 15% of those units will be set aside for affordable housing. So 51 of the 340 units will be set aside as affordable housing, and then the remainder of those units will be market rate. So this will be a mixed income development. There are a number, in addition to the residential, there's 4,717 square feet of proposed ground floor commercial uses in this building. And this is a close-up of the proposed area. The Weston Hotel is at the north end of this site, and then you see the parking garage, the retail areas, a walking trail, and then two public, privately owned public spaces, the Linear Park and a Commons Park, that will be granted to the city by way of easement, public purpose easement, park easement. And that'll be all memorialized in written instruments and a development agreement that'll be approved by the City Commission. Next slide. This is a rendering of what it looks like from Cypress Creek. Again, it's 12 stories in height, but you can see that the building has a lot of movement in it. It really has a lot of recesses, a lot of terracing, curved balconies to give it a lot of interest and, you know, give it some variation to the facade. And it's not continued in one single volume of height. It has a lot of movement, and that was really due to city staff's suggestion that we not have this as one big blocky building. The idea was to create, you know, something that had a lot of movement in the facade, and so that's what we did. Not me, the architect who's here. So this is a view internally from Corporate Drive. You can see on the right is the parking garage that'll have the, both the residential and the hotel parking. The hotel will have its own entrance to the parking garage, which is down on the bottom right-hand corner of this slide. You could see that little area that is really accessible from the hotel. The residential will have its own entrance to the parking garage. And then this is another view of the project from Cypress Creek. You could see that the building, again, has some breaks in it, and you could see on, really at the center of this graphic, there's a cutout in the building that's about three stories that allows light and air to move in between the buildings and gives it a building separation, appearance of a building separation. And then this is a view of the corner of Northeast 7th Street and Corporate Drive. So this is sort of the internal access drive for the site. And then this is the main entrance to the residential portion of the building along Corporate Drive. The cutout of the building, you can really visualize here. It is three stories in height, and will have signage and some really interesting architectural and landscaping features. There are, as I mentioned, three public areas that we'll be granting to the city by way of easements. The first, there are three areas. The first one is the Linear Park that's located on the bottom right-hand corner. The second is what we call Commons Park, which is on the top left corner. And then we have a walking trail that's shown on this graphic with the dotted red line. That's about, about a quarter mile to a half mile trail that'll be granted to the city as a pedestrian promenade. And the easements for the parks will be granted as well. Moving a little closer, the Linear Park, this is a close-up of what that will look like. It'll have not only some furnishings, benches, but it'll also have something that is not seen in, at least I haven't seen it, or some sculptural earthwork. You could see some inspirational photos in this particular slide, on the top, on the top of the slide. And then this is a rendering of what that Linear Park will look like from a pedestrian perspective. The other park is what we call Commons Park. It's sort of in between the two buildings, between the hotel and the parking garage. And again, that will incorporate sculptural earthwork, specialty paving, plantings, furniture, and will be a nice, you know, refuge from the, for the residents and for the hotel guests and the public. And then lastly is the walking trail. Again, that's just a trail that goes around the buildings and will give the city a pedestrian access easement for those areas. And that is the walking trail, a rendering of the walking trail and the dog park that's incorporated into the project. There are some conditions of approval that we've worked with your staff to amend, and they're not major amendments, they're just really more or less about the timing of some of the conditions of approval. I'll go ahead and pass out the revised conditions of approval. I have discussed them with staff, and they are in agreement with them. But basically, what we've done is it's changed some of the timing of the requirements for the development agreement and the easements. The easements are typically done prior to final CO. That way, there, you have as-built conditions, and you can grant the city an easement for the actual areas. If we grant them too early, sometimes things change, things shift a little bit, and so you don't want to have to go through the process all over again. So those are conditions that we make of final CO. The development agreement will be a condition of final DRC. And then there was a condition inadvertently omitted, and that was a condition that we pay to the city a proportionate share for some road improvements. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I'll go ahead and pass out the revised conditions of approval.
Are there any questions for the applicant's counsel?
Yes. Could you bring up the site plan again that shows the public, you're calling them public access areas?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, this, this obviously is a condition of a PDD. They have to be significant, significant improvements to the property that are available to the, to the public to be qualified for a PDD. I'm a little disappointed, and maybe I'm not seeing it because the scale is what it is. There seems to be only one entrance from the public sidewalk into the first, what you call the Linear Park. Can you, can you look under the trees?
So there are, there's an access opening. I gotta see if I can show you maybe on this. There's an, there's an access opening. I don't know if I can.
No, you can't. Just go, can you go over there?
Yeah, oh, there we go.
Yeah, turn the mic around. There you go.
Okay. So I'm going to point to the access from Cypress Creek and from Corporate Drive, so... There's an, there's a walkway right over here. There's a walkway over here. And there's access from here.
Okay, and is there, is there any signage at those points indicating to the public that they are welcome and that this is a public area?
There aren't, there currently are not plans for that, but we're amenable to doing that.
Yeah, I would think that that would be, that would be something that I would want to see. I'm not sure that anybody is going to really know that this is public because it looks, it doesn't look like a public space. So I would, I would certainly want to see at every one of those access areas on the public right-of-way, a sign indicating to the public that this is available to them for their use at certain times. I'm sure it's time limited. Have you gotten that far in terms of what the time limitations are and what the actual dimensions of this Linear Park especially, and all the parks? I mean, do we have a document that shows the actual area on this site plan that will be dedicated to the public as a condition of this PDD?
There is. There's an open space diagram.
Yeah, do we have it?
I don't know if it's in your backup, but we've provided it in the package.
Can the staff illuminate, can the staff illuminate on whether it is in our package? No?
I'm checking.
Oh, there we go.
I will tell you that the, the walking trail is a five-foot wide path. It's a sidewalk that runs exactly where that red line is, the red lines.
So is, is the easement on that sidewalk or some area of landscaping on either side of it, or it's just the five-foot sidewalk?
No, it's just the sidewalk. It's just the sidewalk. I don't know that there's any reason for people to be, you know, going on the landscaping, but yes.
I'm just asking. I want to know what is the extent of the dedication of the open space, which is the condition precedent to the granting?
Yeah, let me see. Page 10 of the, this is probably a little bit more than what, this is open space, but there's, so it's not quite, there's an open space diagram, but it's a little bit more than what we would be giving the city. So we will work with the city to come up with a better diagram before City Commission, but I can tell you the areas, I'm going to point again. This probably is not as accurate with the yellow as it kind of extends this way for the park. It goes like this. And then this.
Nectaria, we have to get you on the record, please, Mike. Thanks.
Well, maybe easier, well, maybe easier to use the monitor up there and for the...
I don't think I can point to it.
Well, I think, I think my concern is not to see it now. My concern is, I'm, you're asking me to approve it without seeing it and without knowing the dimensions and location of the area being dedicated to open space. I, I find that problematic, but if you can assure me, if the staff can assure us that there will be a document that will be provided to the City Commission before they approve it, then I can take this, I can take it on faith.
Yes.
That's my only question on the site plan. My other questions have to do with the affordable units. Is that under some program, or is that a decision on the part of the developer to just do that?
That was a decision on the part of the developer to do it as part of our land use plan amendment in order to show the county, because the city has affordable housing policies in place. But when we were going through the, the land use plan, the land use plan amendment at the county level, I think the county, to show the county that there is, recognize that there's a crisis of affordable housing in the county, we went ahead and voluntarily right off the bat. We didn't, we were not asked to do it, we just right off the bat.
That's admirable, but I'm wondering under what program and who's monitoring it and what's the affordability criteria? Are we at, at median income, 120% of median income, 50%?
I have that information for you. It's moderate, affordable, so it's between 80 and 120% of the median income. The median income is 88,500 a year.
Okay, that, that, that's good. But where is, is there any documentation that this will be so and that this will be in perpetuity?
Yes.
Do we have that information?
It's not in perpetuity. It's for 30 years, yes, yeah. And the, there is a document that was recorded in the public records as part of our land use plan amendment. It's included in, I believe it was included in your backup, but that is a recorded instrument already in the public records.
Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have.
And that is another public purpose component to this project.
Thank you. Yes, that would be, if you're not getting a bonus for it.
Well, we're not getting a bonus.
Right, so that, okay, good.
Mary?
Yeah, what, on the public spaces, what's the total acreage of those public spaces?
I don't know the, off the top of my head. I don't know exactly what the...
I looked for it, I didn't see it. Lorraine, do you know by any chance?
Yeah. We will be able to quantify that, I think, before we go to City Commission, because I, I think Ms. Mamanno brought up a good point. She wants that sort of written and a little bit better memorialized than just seeing it on a graphic.
And if we could just, my suggestion would be, and I think I've seen this done on other PDDs that have it on the chart, so that we can readily see what the size of these public spaces are. And also, going to your parking, it looks like if this was conventional, you'd be looking for a parking reduction here. Can you just speak to that?
Yes, so the parking, there is a reduction requested on the hotel. We're requesting that the parking be provided at .67 per room, and that was really a function of the hotel telling us, this is what we need. We need 200 spaces for our uses. Rather than, and they've monitored and they know what their requirements are, or what their needs are. We also took it upon ourselves, Joaquin Vargas, who is our traffic consultant, went ahead and did monitoring during an event at the hotel in June, and he confirmed that their parking was, I think their biggest demand was at 180 or so spaces at the time. Am I, am I right? 180 or so spaces. So it was well within the amount that the hotel had represented to us. In addition to that reduction, under the city's code, affordable housing units are allowed to seek a reduction. So for the 15...
You arrived, but there are some corrections to the staff report, including the table that you're commenting on. And in that case, should I start from the beginning on the corrections from page one or, or go, yeah, okay. The City Attorney's Office is suggesting I start with page one. So just going from page one, the applicant has been updated to PFL 7, Roman numeral 7, LLC. On page two, the 180-day expiration date is updated to May 22, 2023. That was the original deadline, and the extension is until January 9, 2024.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
If this doesn't get to the Commission before that, you're extending that, and that's a condition that you're extending it past January 2024.
Yeah, we're expected to go for first reading on Jan, in January. It looks like it probably will be either January 9 or the second meeting in January, and then second reading in February. So we'll extend it to, I think we can do this on the record, we can extend it until mid-February, I would say February 10. We should be in front of the Commission and finished.
Okay, and that's a condition tonight.
That's, that's a voluntary, that's my representation. It's voluntary, thanks.
Continuing on corrections to the staff report on page seven, in the second paragraph, the second to last, the sentence, the proposed development is proposing 835 parking spaces, surpassing the analyzed demand by 17 parking spaces. Then in the table in the second column, next to Studio One Bedroom, it's 137 units. Two-bedroom, 134 units. Three-bedroom, 18 units. Going to the fourth column, under PDD proposed ratio per parking reduction request, the ratio for Studio One Bedroom is 1.75 per unit, two spaces per unit for two-bedroom. And then on the last page of the staff report, on page nine, the conditions that were revised include, number two, pursuant to ULDR Section 4738A, park impact fees, applicant will be required to pay park impact fee for the proposed residential units, less any applicable credits consistent with ULDR Section 4738A8, credits prior to issuance of building permit. Then under number four, A, was updated to prior to final DRC approval, record of a unified control document recorded in the public records of Broward County encompassing the PDD land area. B, prior to issuance of a final certificate of occupancy, record in the public records of Broward County any required non-exclusive utility easements and non-exclusive easements for public open space for the areas shown on the PDD development plan. C, prior to final DRC, recorded development agreement with the city which includes permitted uses and provisions for the construction... uses and provisions for the construction of the public improvements, including public open space and streetscape improvements according to the approved site plan. I think the other one was there, but just in case, number five, prior to issuance of the building permit other than site permits, applicant shall be required to pay $14,567.98 to the City of Fort Lauderdale's Transportation and Mobility Department for their proportional share for two turn lane extensions. And I'm available for any questions.
Mary, do you have any questions or is your...
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. That's my indicator. Marilyn?
Yes, I did have one more question about the open space. What is the, what is the condition which would trigger the open space being available to the public? Is it like temporary COO, COO for occupancy? I'm concerned about when we get the open space.
We get the, you get the open space when the open space has been completed and we have our final CO.
So it's final CO?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and how long do you anticipate that being?
Well, the building will probably take about 24 months to construct, and we'll have, you know, we have a bit of time before.
But the condition is no COO unless the space, the public space is open?
Oh, yes, that's correct.
Where does it say that? Does it say that in here somewhere?
We can't get a final CO until the site improvements have been constructed.
That's not what my question.
Okay.
The accessibility for the public to use those open spaces. We've been through this before on several projects, and we're always concerned about when does the public get to use it? And the condition usually is you don't get a certificate of occupancy until it's finished and available to the public.
So condition, I mean, 4B?
4B. Declaration of Required Easements, dedication of open space recorded in the public records of Broward County, that's not responsive to what I'm asking. You said 4B?
Yes. Are you looking at the revised conditions of approval? The ones I handed out.
4B. Prior to the issuance of final recording permits other than any required, non-exclusive utility easements and non-exclusive easements for public open space for the areas shown on the development plan. Non-exclusive easement for the public open space. So that's there then. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to open this up to the public for any public comment. Is there anybody here to address this item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public portion of this comment. Before we go further, we normally make it habit now of including the staff reports on any item where it's applicable into this without hearing from the staff. Is that the desire of this board, including tonight with any corrections that may be presented?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I probably should get a vote on it. Get a motion? Motion by Mary, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, let's bring it.
I'm sorry. Can you, can you just say who made, who made the motion?
I made the motion to include the staff report.
Mary made the motion, Patrick McTeague made the second.
Okay, thank you.
That was unanimous. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Any discussion or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion if there's no discussion.
Please do.
I'd like to motion, make the motion that the Planning and Zoning Board approves the application and determines that the proposed rezoning and site plan level four application meets the standards and requirements of the ULDR and criteria for site plan level four review. Planning and zoning board shall recommend approval with conditions necessary to ensure compliance with the standards and requirements of the ULDR and criteria for the post rezoning associated development to the City Commission with the following conditions, and it's all of the site, all of the conditions, revised conditions that we have seen tonight, plus I would like to add a condition that all of the entrances to the publicly accessible open space from the public rights of way have signage indicating that the public is welcome and the hours in which the public will be able to use those spaces.
We have a motion by Marilyn, second, by Brad Cohen.
Sorry, one other thing. I believe Ms. Chalkis, you mentioned a voluntary condition?
Yeah, thanks, Lesley. You did it for me, thanks. No, it's okay. I like that. So February 10th was the extension agreed to, Ms. Chalkis, do you want to add that to the condition?
Certainly, add that to the conditions, and the condition that the applicant has voluntarily agreed to provide 51 units of affordable housing.
Yes, that's already...
I thought that was here, but well, let's put it in, okay?
The extension for the 166.033 deadline to February 10, 2024.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Do I have to, you want me to say it again?
Yes, the extension that the applicant has voluntarily agreed to provide the city with an extension to approve or deny until February 10, 2024.
So the additional condition is that the applicant voluntarily agrees to an extension to February?
10th, 2024.
10th, 2024. For what?
That is what she's voluntarily agreeing to at this time. Perhaps the deputy city attorney can persuade you otherwise.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, but pursuant to Florida Statute 166.0141, rezonings need to be conducted at a public hearing, and we don't have sufficient time to advertise the two public hearings for that timeframe. So she would need to waive it to give us additional time for that second hearing, because that first hearing cannot be heard on January 9th.
There's a second meeting?
There's a second meeting in January. That's the meeting, January, and then a first, so for first reading, we could go, we can go in January, so it doesn't have to be January 9th. It could be the second meeting in January, and then second reading of the ordinance can be the first meeting in February. So February 10th is actually more than I think we would need.
Okay.
I can see that concern because of the issues we've had, so in an abundance of caution, would you be willing to go to March 1st in case we have a heavy rainstorm or something? Who knows?
How about the second meeting in February? A second commission meeting in February.
Okay, that's, that's an added, I will add that condition to my conditions, that the applicant agrees to waive the public hearing up until the second meeting in February. Write it in where you want.
Yes, so until the applicant voluntarily agrees to provide the city with an extension under 166.033 until February 20th, which is the second meeting in February, February 20th, 2024. So it's the extension of the requirement to approve, approve with conditions or deny under 166.033 Florida statutes. Got it, Lesley?
Got, she's got it. So what she said.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the motion.
So we have an amended motion by Marilyn. Do we have an amended second by Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's call the roll.
Just for clarification, so the motion was made, the first motion was made by Maman, second one by Sheckman, and then the revised...
No, Cohen.
No, no, no.
Oh, it was Cohen, I'm sorry. Okay, so it's all this, oh. Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig? Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Maman?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weyman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Yep.
All right, moving forward. Next item up is number two on your agenda, case number UDP S23002. Marilyn, we're going to start with you this time as far as disclosures.
None.
Sherry?
I spoke with Ms. Tuthaker.
Patrick?
Phone call from applicant's counsel.
Same.
Oh, yes, these are yours. There's two of them there.
Spoke with applicant's counsel.
Has the letters, you could get the names from them. I forgot to bring.
Steve?
I, site visit and spoke with applicant's counsel and also received letters, email letters.
And I did a site visit and received the emails as well. Okay, Ms. Tuthaker.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning and Zoning Board. Stephanie Tuthaker on behalf of Ocean Harbor Residences, the owner of the property. ...for 240 feet in height. I'll share with you that much of what you see in the residential high RMH 60 district has achieved that additional height. If you're east of the intercoastal, the additional height that's permitted is to 240. If you're west, it's 300. So the Hilton Marina that's on 17th Street Causeway, that's zoned RMH 60, that's much higher because it's west of the intercoastal. So that's an example of a project that was approved under the RMH 60 that achieved that conditional use height. The maximum structure length, we're well under what the structure length maximum is. We exceed the minimum lot with, from 50 feet, we exceed it to 200 feet. Minimum floor area, these are extremely high-end luxury units, so we're way over what is permitted by code. The minimum landscape area is 35%. We're north of 40%, and the parking required is 79 spaces. We are actually providing 104, again, because these are super-high-end luxury units, so you expect to have more parking with your unit. Setbacks. So this is one of the other modifications that we are asking you for this evening, and I'm going to have, bring Bernardo up in just a minute here to talk about, and you can see it in context, but I just want to share with you, I know you are very familiar with this section of the code that says, here's your minimum, but the, but the code makes you ask for anything that's less than half the height of the building. Half of the height of the building, the setbacks would fall into each other because half the height of the building would be 120 feet on both sides, so that would be an unbuildable lot. So that's why every project on the beach comes in and asks for yard modifications, but we were very careful in trying to maintain a minimum of 20 feet at the, at the bottom, at the base level to preserve those view corridors to, to the, to the intercoastal. So on the front, we are, we have 26 feet, 7 inches. That's, that's at the front of the building. On the east side, we're asking for a modification to 21 feet, 5 inches. On the west side, it's 20 feet, a modification to 20 feet, 11 inches, and at the rear, it's 26 feet, 3 inches. Those are the modifications that we are requesting. I do have a second column here, and I know Bernardo will talk about this a little bit, at the higher levels, because the balconies come out, once you get past the podium, the balconies come out and they start to undulate around, so at the smallest points, the setbacks are a little bit smaller, but it's due to the exterior space that's provided by the balconies. So I'm going to ask Bernardo to come up. Ready to go? Come on. I'm going to have Bernardo talk about the, the site plan itself, and then I'll come back and talk about some of the compliance with the code.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'm Bernardo for Pressure from Architectonica. The image that you see in front of you is the site plan. If you notice, we're able to bring in vehicles into the property so that they don't line up on the street. As you know, that's one of the problems with Ubers and so forth, so we have, we have a recessed arrival with plenty of queuing that is totally internalized within the site, yet we still provide a direct pedestrian entrance into the lobby. They don't have to go past the cars that are disembarking. And straight-up access to the parking so that also they're not blocked by any other traffic that we may have that is external to the property. There are view corridors on both sides, so the, you can see out to the water from the sidewalk, and they're beautifully landscaped, and I'm going to show you renderings of this, and everything facing the water, of course, is activated with uses within the building. There you go. You can see here what I mean, we have a garage that is concealed within this sculptural podium that has planting, and it's not a straight box, it has undulation. You see the building above that is split into two parts, and I'm going to show you first from arrival, this is what I mean by the garden and the entrance. We rise gently to the level, the base flood elevation, and we have ramps that take you up, and you see the sort of tropical native plants that we're using in the gardens that lead out to the view to the water, and you see the curved glass and the transparency of the lobby and the, and how the building floats over this sort of glass base of the building. And you can see here the view as you are entering the ramp that takes you to the main entrance. We of course have steps as well, and how do we look out into the space? So in fact, the openness and transparency of the lobby are important in the sense that it opens up even further, that vista to the, to the water, and you can see that even on the other side, we have that vista as well. You can see here the building as it looks from the water. You notice the taper of the building and the curvature, and how we, in a way, split the volume into two by virtue of those angles and curves, so that it's not a linear, sort of wider building, but it has, is, there's a certain thinness as it grows to the top where you can see the trellis, where the mechanical space and the amenity floor is overlooking a pool that you see on the left-hand side, where you see that terrace up on top of the building. So the building is, is sort of opening up and creating that effect that gives it perspective and the curvatures that give it a sort of nautical feeling. You see the wood soffits and the terraces so that there's a connection with the boat and the boat life and the marina in front. You can see here at night how that effect is further exaggerated, particularly in the garage, where you see that the lighting sort of highlights the softness of the, of the podium and how it floats over the glowing base of the building, and how the top is standing out with its deep terraces, and the wood becomes very evident as you look up into the, into the underside of the rooftop of facilities that we have located on top. And that gives you a general overview of the, of the design. Thank you.
So I'd like to just spend a minute on the criteria. First, obviously, this is, anything that's on the water comes to the Planning and Zoning Board, so the project satisfies the sections in the ULDR that relate to waterway use. ULDR Section 47238 requires that buildings and land uses abutting waterways be designed to preserve the character of the city and neighborhood which they're located, harmonize with other development, and protect and enhance the scenic quality and tranquility of the waterways, which I believe we've done by creating very large setbacks on both sides. The site is designated with the building setbacks that I already went through, and the proposed setbacks do provide those view corridors to the water. This is the conditional use section, and I think this is really important, so I apologize that it's long, but I think it's really important to go through why we believe we comply with the conditional use. The PZ Board, PZ Board Staff Report states that the project will enhance the site and provide improvements along the intercoastal waterway. The proposed use of the site is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and the project is designed to be harmonious. The development will have access from Harbor Drive, will have a minimum impact on the transportation network with minor increase in traffic due to the increase of only 12 units, because it's 24 units now, and this is proposed at 36. The location or use of the structure is not in conflict with the city's comprehensive plan. It's why I spent a minute going through the comprehensive plan. We're smack dab in the middle of the section of the comprehensive plan that speaks to 60 units to the acre, which is what this building is designed to. Off-site or onsite conditions exist which reduce any impact or permitting use of the structure. It's actually an improvement to the back-out parking and some of the, if you're familiar with the buildings that are there today, they're in very, very poor shape. I think having a new, modern building that meets hurricane codes and building codes, I think, is a, is a, is a huge improvement. It'll also have very wide sidewalks and pedestrian capability up and down Harbor Drive. It'll also have very wide sidewalks and pedestrian capability up and down Harbor Drive, at least where this improvement happens. The onsite improvements have been incorporated into the site plan, which minimize any adverse impacts as a result of permitting the structure. Again, removes the back-out parking, lots of streetscape improvements, sidewalk improvement, defined access points for the access to the garage, moving that traffic, as Bernardo said, moving that traffic off of Harbor Drive and into the garage. The location or proximity to a similar use does not impact the character of the zoning district. Again, we are RMH 60, we are next to RMH 60, we are surrounded by RMH 60, except on the east. On the east is SBMHA, but the zoning is compatible with what's next to it, next to it to the west and next to it to the south. And obviously, on the north is the intercoastal. And there are no adverse impacts of the use which will affect the health, safety, and welfare. This is actually a huge improvement over what's there today, and the buildings, I think, that are there are unsafe structures. So we believe this is a huge improvement. So thank you for bearing with me on that. And the project satisfies the yard modification criteria, the proposed, I'm just going to skip through, I know you're very familiar with these yard modifications, but the proposed design provides for well-defined entrances, improved landscaping in the front yard, contributes to the public realm by adding sidewalks, removing that back-out parking, lots of facade articulation. You can see, as I mentioned when I started, these are condominium units, these are very large. They're two, three, and four-bedroom units. They are, the owner is in discussion about possibly making this a branded residence that he might be able to speak to, I'm not sure, but these are units that we are very confident would be very well-received by the community. It also satisfies the neighborhood compatibility criteria. You know, the PZB Staff Report, which I'm sure you've all read, I don't need to read it to you, but the proposed building height of 240 feet is specifically permitted by the zoning district, and it's compatible with the zoning districts that surround it. The building setbacks are compatible, the fenestration, the overall mass, all of those, we believe, are compatible with the neighborhood, and especially when you look in the context of what happens on the north and what happens on the east of it. We have no traffic impacts, it's one net new PM trip, and meets water and wastewater capacity. Again, with the addition of only 12 units, it's really a very small project. We did have a large number of public participation meetings, and we invited all of the adjacent neighborhoods. We met many times with Harbor Ridge Place Condominium Association. We held virtual public participation meetings that we invited Harbor Beach, Harbor Inlet, Harbor Ridge Place, again, Villa Madrid, Bahia Vista. And even though we're outside of the boundaries of the Central Beach Alliance, we did present to the Central Beach Alliance and had a very, very nice meeting at the Central Beach Alliance, very, very well-received. Bernardo presented at that meeting. And we did that twice, we had two. We had one virtual and one general membership meeting at the CBA. This is the letter of support from the Harbor Ridge Place. I think this is very important. We worked very hard on this, and it's, I think you'll find that it took a lot of work, and we're very, very proud that we were able to work with Harbor Ridge Place. This is a letter of conditions, and again, I don't need to read, but these are things that we also, that are in our agreement with Harbor Ridge Place, of some of the commitments that we made to Harbor Ridge Place. And then we recently received from Villa Madrid, which is the building that's next to us, from the HOA manager, a list of things that they would like us to agree to, which we are voluntarily agreeing to this evening, which include, developers shall clean the parking lot regularly and wash down as needed, we voluntarily commit to that. Developers shall clean the cars and pool area once a month. Pool filters shall be replaced at developer's expense. Any damages repaired by the developer's expense, we voluntarily commit to that. Developers, general contractors, shall screen and protect the west side of the property, abutting Villa Madrid as needed and permitted by the city, we voluntarily commit to that. Developers shall install a fence, which height is subject to the city's approval on the west side of the property, we commit to that as well voluntarily, whatever the height is that's permitted by the code, we would, we commit to that. And developers shall clean the exterior of the buildings to the west and roofs, the ladder of every three months or when required, and we're happy to commit to that as well. So just another image of the project. And with that, I just would like to have Eduardo come up for just a minute, and I just would like you to hear from Eduardo. As I said, he grew up here in Fort Lauderdale and is a resident.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for giving us the time. Just a little bit about this project, about this area. I grew up here in the 80s. My grandfather purchased a house in Harbor Beach. In the 90s, my father purchased it from my grandfather. I grew up in Venezuela, but I came every Christmas and summer's year. I cleaned docks, I worked on docks, I worked with Harry Lovell cleaning boats and so forth and dock building. Growing up, I ran past this place, you know. Massive buildings with hundreds of units, but, you know, to make, to develop 36 units, it's a challenge to make a successful project. And, you know, this is just, I wanted to come up and say a couple of words, just to demonstrate, you know, I currently live here, my, you know, my family, my kids study in Boca and here in Fort Lauderdale. I currently just build a house. I'm moving, actually, I moved yesterday into my new house here. So I mean, I'm committed to Broward and giving back to the community that I was raised in. And so those are just a couple of words before we break up too.
Can you just state your full name? Thanks. Over here. Hi. Yeah, can you just state your full name? Thanks.
Eduardo Peláez.
It does not have balconies. However, the building is taller, at 11, 12 stories, I believe.
So that would be 120 feet?
That would be at the 120 feet in the RMH 60 zoning. You have an existing residential on the south side of Harbor Drive, about six stories, I think it is, on the south side. The properties directly on either side of it, obviously the ones in the rack, the Bahia Cabana, the other side are the residential two-story buildings that are lower scale. Obviously, this is much bigger than that, but the property, those buildings are actually closer to the property line than what's being proposed here.
I guess my concern, I'm just wondering, they're proposing 240 feet, and I'm looking at a picture that doesn't show anything close to that, anywhere around it. So I'm just wondering how you arrived at...
Well, there's also the project around the bend there. I don't recall what the name is, in the Harbor Drive that's 240 feet. I'm not quite sure what the name of that development is.
The one that was proposed.
The Harbor Ridge. That project, yes, it's existing.
The Harbor Ridge that's around, that's much further away than these closer buildings.
It's within the RMH 60 zoning area and the land use, so it's on Harbor Drive, it's just around the bend, but it's within the vicinity of this project.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a question about that comment?
Sure.
I'm looking at the Bahia Cabana drawings right now, elevations right now. And yes, you could certainly say that if Bahia Cabana were built and existing, that this would be compatible, but we have no guarantee that Bahia Cabana project will ever be built. So I'm a little concerned about making a finding based upon a building that may or may not be built, and therefore, this compatibility issue becomes, you know, tentative to me. Just a comment.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Along the same lines that they were speaking here, the height, I don't see it either. I see that the Harbor Ridge is about the only thing that compares with that, and that was something that sort of slid in under the wire, under the radar some years back, and nothing since. It even galvanized a lot of the activists in the area to form, to make sure that kind of thing didn't happen. So if I'm, I believe that if we allow the 240 here, the entire area in that RMH 60, in that around the horseshoe, could go the same way, and everyone could justify it. Is that what we want, something that high, which is relatively close to transitioning down to single-family homes, that are one or two stories?
So...
It just seems like the whole thing. So the property itself is in the furthest end away from those homes, but it's still so high.
So the increase in height is permitted in RMH 60, up to 240 feet. It is up to the board to make that determination. Staff gives you the technical analysis that we do, and that is tied to the conditional use. So if you look at the section of staff report that talks about conditional use, that addresses those elements. Why staff put it before you is because they've met the criteria under conditional use. Then it's up to the board. I'm sorry.
And staff's opinion.
Well, that's the staff report, yes. It's our analysis that we've done.
And we get the subjective sort of opinion. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would have a lot of questions about the staff report on the conditional use and sideyard modifications, but should we be listening to the public before we have that discussion, or it's your pleasure?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff before we open up a public hearing? Okay. At this point, we will open up the public hearing. I've got three people have filled out chits to speak. We'll start with Babs Byer.
Do you actually want me to plug that up?
Stage fright?
No. But there is stuff lying on the property.
We'll say that Babs is in the restroom for now, so we'll call Cindy Long.
Okay.
Do you want me to put you off too, Cindy?
No.
Because we'll go work our way right back to Babs real quick.
I guess I go over here.
Please state your name.
My name is Cindy Long, and I live at 3025 Harbor Drive. And that would be those little tiny buildings right here that you see at the base of this. And I guess my main question is, is I'm not sure why developers buy property knowing what the limitations are and then try to change the neighborhood. There is nothing compatible about this. When you look at the lots that are built, you have the Harbor Ridge, which is the largest building there, which everyone says, how did it ever get past development to begin with? Then you have a property that's directly across the street from us, which is this one, and that is a six- or seven-story building. The rest of them are two-story buildings. We desperately want development on our street. It's not that we don't want development, we just want something to be size-appropriate. The street has so many different places that are going to be built up on it, and if y'all let this large building go on this, it sets a precedent for everything else that's developed on this street. And the way that they fan out on the top here, should anyone someday down the road purchase Villa Madrid, which is something that they mentioned earlier, which will never happen, because we are a co-op and we need 100% to sell, and we have people that have been there since, families since 1956 when this started, and they are not selling. They refuse to sell. So Villa Madrid is not going anywhere. We are always going to be this little historic place in Fort Lauderdale art deco buildings. We would like to keep the neighborhood a little bit more user-friendly, maybe, with this. It kind of looks like a tornado. It fans out at the top. So if somebody else wants to build on the properties there, are we now going to have to fight with the setbacks and variations that come out this way? Is that, you know, once they're there, then what do you tell the next person? Oh, well, I can hand you a cup of coffee, because you're so far over. Also, the shadowing, I don't know if anyone did a shadowing study or anything, but sun rises in the east, goes down in the west. Our pool area, everything is like right here, so we will be overshadowed by this. And we do realize that someone is going to develop here, we do want to have something developed here, but we want it to be compatible with the neighborhood. We would just like to have something a little bit smaller. The buildings that are there now need to come down. They look horrible. They were stripped last May of everything in them. None of the doors have been boarded up. Homeless people are coming in there. We filed complaints with the city, yes?
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I was remiss in not identifying that we're going to restrict, and I didn't tell you, so I'm going to give you extra time, but to all speakers that are...
Oh, okay.
Unless you're the president of the association, they'll give you extended time.
No, I was.
Or the HOA or whatever, but it's two minutes, you've burned through two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to give you another minute.
Okay. I would just like to say that, you know, we would appreciate them cleaning up the property. We're going over there and cleaning it up now. If this is how it's going to be in the beginning, we can't even imagine what it's going to be like down the road. So we're just hoping for something smaller. We want you, we just want you smaller.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Was your unit ever for sale?
Yes.
Okay. When was that?
Oh, it's been for sale many, many times. If somebody gives me the right amount of money, I'm out of there. I'm, you know...
Right.
I'm not dumb.
Well, it looks like, it looks like when I go on Zillow, that the units that are across the street and around the corner are like $200,000 to $300,000, and the units that are for sale in Villa, what was it called?
Villa Madrid.
Villa Madrid. Looks like you guys are asking 1.3 million a unit.
Oh, no, that's no. No, there is a, several units in Villa Madrid are double units. They ran out of parking spaces, so they made them, that is a double unit, it's approximately 1,600 square feet.
Okay.
And that is on the market, but they have not had any offers. First of all, they know anybody goes down the street, and they look at the street and they go, I don't want to spend a million, three...
Right.
...to live in this property.
And what was your unit listed for?
My unit was listed for 445.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
But it didn't sell.
I understand, thank you. Hopefully, maybe it will.
Next, here from Rodney. I'm sorry, I can't read, but it looks like Fensterman? Fenstermacher?
Fenstermacher, that was pretty...
I was close. I'm very good at butchering names.
Well, that's quite all right. Knowing I only have two minutes, I'll try to go quickly and...
Do me a favor, first introduce yourself.
Rodney Fenstermacher, 3037 Harbor Drive, right aside of Villa Madrid. And I won't go over the things that I thank Marilyn for bringing up and you for bringing up. One of them is compatibility with the neighborhood. My family's been there for 60 years in Bahia Vista, which is right aside of Villa Madrid. And yes, we did have a unit sold recently there for $725,000. But we're not against development, like Cindy said, but we would like reasonable development. And when you, when the staff says that this is compatible with the neighborhood, what we were hoping is there might be some transition. At least Bahia Cabana was only going to the 120 feet, and now, all of a sudden, we have 270 feet, and there's more on the drawing board. Eventually, it's going to, if you open up the door, it's going to be a big tower jungle on Harbor Drive. So I'm not sure how they say that it's compatible with the neighborhood. We're still old Florida. Yes, we've had offers from the developers, they'd like to buy us, and I think they're thinking if they can make it unpleasant enough, we'll sell. And I don't want to jump to that conclusion, but it feels that way. So my concern is that it be compatible, that there be a transition, because you're going to, they're going to walk out their door to a 270-foot wall 20 feet away. I don't see where that's transitional. I don't see where that's part of the neighborhood. And I will tell you, the other thing I want to correct with all the pretty pictures, which they're very nice, and all the discussion that was very flowery, we've never had a meeting that they sat and talked to us and got our input and our thoughts. We were invited to one Zoom meeting that, here's what we're going to do, here's what we see, and that was it. So they did not work with our association. They did not do any of the things they were presenting you tonight. It was one Zoom meeting. We would have loved to participate in having some discussion about where they were going, what they were doing. The Harbor Ridge, they did, but we're like next door in Villa Madrid, and they kind of, oh, you're a little word, we're going to ignore you. So I agree with what they said. You open the door, this whole neighborhood is going to be nothing but a jungle of towers. But we want development. We're not against development. We just want transitional, compatible development.
I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Fenstermacher.
If... So they're permitted to build 120 feet, right? You guys are okay with 120 feet, even though the shadowing would be almost identical because you're right next door?
What I would say is, I'm okay with them doing what was on the for-sale sign, what was advertised, and what was the zoning. When you go to the conditional use, that is when you get the real, real height. We're not expecting they're going to build a three-story building. That's not practical, that's not realistic. That's not practical, that's not realistic. But to go from two stories to 270 feet within 20 feet, think about that in your own neighborhood. You walk out your door, and you're looking at a 270-foot wall.
I think it's, was it 240? Yeah, 240.
Yeah, but they, what they forget to tell you is, that doesn't count the utilities that may be on the top. That makes it taller.
Right.
They don't count, you don't count that. And those are the things us uneducated people didn't know and are learning.
I get it. But I guess my main question is, if they built a 120-foot building there, it's, would you still think that would be compatible with your, I mean, you're saying that a lot of buildings are going to be there. I'm just trying to get an idea for everyone that's speaking. You're saying that 120, which they would be allowed to build, wouldn't that still be the same thing, it'd be a bunch of buildings on, and they're allowed to build that?
Certain things we're going to have to live with. And that's why I was saying, if they had met with us that we could have had some input, which they said they did, which they did not.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Following the line of questioning, you said that, you know, there are certain things you're going to, you have to learn to live with. So, if they were to build a building of 120 feet, it would certainly be less of a shadow, but it would still be a shadow. Would that be something that you think you could live with?
Well, the way I would view the answer to that question is, like I said a little bit earlier, is nobody's going to build a three-story building there.
Okay, so we're looking at somewhere more reasonable?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
That's what we're trying to get to. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Byers, are you ready?
I'm ready. I'm ready to speak. 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 Hello, my name is Babs Byers. I represent the property management company for Villa Madrid that sits right there. First of all, I'd like to say to the developers, taking into consideration the scheduling for the issues that we had, and putting it in here. There is only one other thing that's been left off, that's come to our attention most recently, and we would like you to add to the scheduling, pest control effective immediately because of the vagrants and homeless that are in there. We've had a massive increase in rats. Once you tear it down and you clean it all up, it'll probably slow down, and we can pull that all back. And that is all I have to say on the matter at this point in time.
Thank you.
No, I have a question.
The best for last.
Ma'am? The Villa Madrid, is that a co-op?
Yes, it is.
And do they have a board of directors?
Yes, they do.
And has the board of directors passed a resolution in support or in opposition to this project?
It is split.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there anybody else from the public that would like to be heard on this hearing? And seeing nobody, we will close the public hearing portion of this and bring it back to the board for a motion or discussion.
I have one question, though, and I don't know if the applicant knows. How many, how many units are at Villa Madrid?
There are 20, 22 units, and my client had 15 of them under contract.
Oh, okay.
And we'd be happy to agree, had, had, we would be happy to agree to the request for pest control voluntarily as well.
Okay. Patrick, you have a question?
Just, yeah, real quick for the applicant. The list you showed us was from Villa Madrid of things that they would like you to do if this project moves forward.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. And we're agreeing to all of those, plus the request for the pest control.
Thank you.
Marilyn, do you have another question?
Oh, yeah, I have some questions. I would like to follow on Ms. Furtick's comments on the staff report. And first, I want to address the conditional use permit, the conditions of a conditional use, because I don't think the height of 240, being not a given height, or a permitted height, or an as-of-right height, is something we should compare it to. I compare this to 120, which is the as-of-right height of the zoning district. So, I would like to go through these. I'll try to be quick. When I'm looking at the criteria for the conditional use permit, the first one says that the impact on the abutting properties has to be evaluated on the neighborhood compatibility. And Ms. Toothaker went through her version of neighborhood compatibility. I don't think that it is compatible. I really don't. I think that the, although the property is adjacent to residential uses on the south and west, already approved Bahia Cabana, and to the north on the intercoastal, the idea that, the comment that the PDD project in Bahia Mar, all the way across the waterway, is relevant, to me, is not true, because they only got a 300-foot height, because they're a PDD, and they provided significant public, they said significant public contributions. So, I don't compare this project to 300 feet. I don't compare this project to 240 feet. I compare it to 160 feet. So, if it was 160 feet, then the side yard requirement, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the side yard requirement would have been half of 160.
80 feet.
80 feet. Okay, so we're going from 80 feet to 20 feet. To me, that's a little excessive. And what's really concerning me is not only is that an excessive, in my opinion, reduction, now you're telling me that when we go up, we're actually going to encroach on the 20 feet with the balconies. And, you know, while I'm, I'm all for luxury units, but I don't feel that, because y'all want some luxury units, and they want bigger balconies, that that's a reason to allow an encroachment on already reduced side yard. So, I cannot support the encroachment into the yards. I also think that there's no question that the use is permitted and is compatible. It's all, and there's no question of the traffic, and there is no question of compatibility with comprehensive plan, because it's compatible, okay? But they do say that you are asking for these require, these modifications based on site constraints, and the need to provide for visual interest consistent with emerging development patterns. In my opinion, that is not a reason to be consistent with emerging visual interests and things like that. I just don't think that that's relevant to the conditions. There's a couple other ones that I think are very important to point out. One is that, there's page three, page three, okay. One is that the location of the use and proximity to similar uses does not impact the character. Granted, this is not a use issue. The use is compatible, but the structure is not compatible. Why does a twice as tall and wide a building not impact the character of the surrounding area? I just, I don't see it. And what, the things that you are providing, and then they're admirable. It's a, it's a, it's a nice site plan at the ground level, and it activates the front of the waterfront. There's a lot of good elements in this project. But I believe that it is excessively tall, just because you want super-luxury, super-big apartments, two-to-a-floor, some of the floors are three-to-a, three apartments, some of them are only two to the floor.
That's correct.
You could have made this building a little smaller by doing more three-to-a-floor, and it just would have come down a little bit. And I just think that the balconies are just blowing my mind, because, you know, it's a further encroachment on an encroached yard, and to no avail, there's no public purpose to it, other than to accommodate super-luxury apartments who want more balconies. I don't, if you want the balconies on the side, then shrink the apartments, you know, five feet. These are close to 400, 4,200 square-foot apartments. They could lose five feet on the side. If you really anticipate that you want them to go all the way around, you could design it so that you didn't have to encroach on the side yards. So, really, the essence of my concern is, I don't think that the, I don't think there's any necessity to encroach upon an already encroached side yard. I don't think there's any necessity to go this high, just because you particularly want these very large luxury apartments. The building could have been smaller. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So, we close the public portion of the hearing, had comments. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to talk about this for a minute. This reminds me of a, of another area that we've gone into, where it started with one side yard modification, and it was then becoming every property. I have two concerns, one's those modifications, but the other is just, is just, I mean, I'm looking at this picture in front of me, and we're premising conditional, we're premising the right to 240 feet, based on something that you just, you know, a picture's worth 1,000 words. I don't see it, and I think if it's our intent to change what this area is going to look like that dramatically, that we should do that through a deliberate zoning decision to change the area, and, and work with those neighbors, and see if in fact, that's what is going to happen here. But to property by property, I mean, there'll be a day when it will be, if we property by property keep making these changes with no change in zoning. I, I just, I just don't see that neighborhood compatibility, and I find that very troubling. I find when we've deviated in the past, we reach a point where, a tipping point, where it, it becomes the norm, and, and I just, I don't think that's the way that we should be zoning.
Are you done?
Yes.
Would you like to respond? Yeah, you need to turn your microphone on.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to just say, say one more thing. I, I want to make the point that neighborhood compatibility is not defined by what's there today. Neighborhood compatibility is defined by what the zoning potentially permits. That's how neighborhood compatibility is defined. You don't look at a building, I don't know when Villa Madrid was built, but you don't look at a building that was built in the 50s or 60s and say, well, it's only two stories, so even though our land use planning and our zoning planning has defined this area to be RMH 60, which permits this height, but we have to look at what was built in the 50s. Zoning is, and compatibility is defined, and that's why it speaks to use and zoning, and not structure that's next to you. It's specifically defined by what the zoning permits. And the reality is, and even the lovely lady who spoke, her unit's been for sale. The reality is Villa Madrid has been on and off the market, on and off the market. When we started this project, we had, my client had, over time, had 15 of the units under contract, because everyone realizes that ultimately, that property's going to get redeveloped too. It's just a question of time. That's just the reality of what we've seen in Fort Lauderdale. So, I would just ask you to take that into consideration when you think about compatibility.
And I would be taking into consideration, what is the height? What is the height by right height in the zoning district?
240 feet.
No, that's not true. That's a conditional height.
A conditional use, yes.
That's a conditional use, but not...
But when you, but when you purchase a piece of property, and you read the zoning district, and it says, you may ask the planning and zoning board for...
You may.
...conditional use approval, and here's the criteria, and the criteria is, what is the zoning district next to you?
That is not the criteria. It doesn't say anything about what is the zoning district next to you. I appreciate your, your view, but as a former director of zoning for New York City, I disagree with your interpretation of the zoning. The zoning says 120 feet.
Yes.
Everything else is conditional. That's why you're here.
Correct.
You wouldn't be here.
I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying.
Okay, so that I disagree with your analysis, or your, your, your expression, that, or your, your, your interpretation, that just because 240 feet is permitted as a conditional use, you have to use that as your baseline. I respectfully disagree on that, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
Chair. I had some notes here, and they were kind of debating one of the things that I wanted to speak to. You know, I'm an architect, and there's always two sides, you know, it's the yin and the yang, and it comes into play in all design. And, you know, when you look at compatibility, in theory, if something was undeveloped or not developed to its full potential, you could look at it either way, Marilyn. So, in my eyes, when I see the potential of a property at 60 units per acre, it has the potential to be built to that level. So, as far as compatibility, if you're unfortunate enough to be next door to a single-family home, and you've got a property that would allow you 60 units per acre, and allows you a conditional use process to go up to 240 feet, then I think you should use it, and not be hampered by somebody who's not used the full potential of their property next door. We run into this all the time as architects, developing properties, where, you know, compatibility is always brought into question, but if, if somebody else isn't pulling the trigger, doesn't mean you shouldn't be able to as well. And somebody had asked about shadow studies. I did see those in the packet. Oddly enough, the property next door had shadows from the two-story structures being cast in the pool at the same times as this 240-story building. Yeah, and balconies, I think, are permitted in the setback. I don't know to what level they're permitted, but maybe staff could speak to that.
That is correct. There is yard encroachments permitted in our code for your balconies to encroach in the front and side yards.
How much?
In the front, it is a five-foot encroachment, in the side yards, it's three feet.
And this is an encroachment of three feet at the very front, and as much as nine feet, close to 10 feet further down, so that they can undulate. Thank you.
And the only other thing that I noted in the pack, and I apologize for not having brought this up in previous discussions, I did have a question on open space definitions, because it seems like I see the footprint of the building, and everything else is calculated as open space, but I thought some of that area cannot be included in open space.
There is a 35% requirement for open space, and open space is defined by anything pervious, and also impervious elements can be included in that, not a driveway. But if you look at, I don't know if the site plan has it on there, but they met the minimum 35% requirement, so was there something specific that...
I didn't see it broken out that way. Take a look at the, at the way it's broken out. It seems that the driveways were included in the open space, and I thought that was a little odd. And they had way more open space than what they needed, but I think they may have taken liberty with the driveways.
Okay. Yep, we'll make sure that's corrected before final DRC is issued.
Anything else, John?
No, thank you, Chair.
Brad, did you have a comment?
No, but I have a motion.
Oh, hang on, Mary's got a light on.
Yeah, I just think at some point, we should set some time aside to talk about what people look at a neighborhood. I mean, by the definitions that I see, the rationale is being written in here, which I really thought we had asked not to be done to this extent in staff reports, why does anything come before us? Because everybody can make an argument that they should get 240 feet instead of 120 feet. And at some point, we need to, we need to make what's in the zoning district consistent with what we're doing. And I just trouble speak, because I know where this is going to end up four or five years down the road, because we've already done this in several other areas in town, and then we're like, what did we do? So, I, I just, I don't think this meets that conditional use, and, and I'm troubled by the other modifications in here.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, could I, yes. John, I hear you and I feel you, but the developer is asking to build 36 units. 36 units are what is permitted. There is no diminution in the number of units that he can build, given the size of the lot. My only concern is that he has chosen, chosen, to make very, very large luxurious apartments with only two per floor in many instances, tremendously big, large balconies. That's a choice he made. He could have chosen to make less large apartments, and made the building less obtrusive and less bulky. That was all I was saying when I was expressing my opinion.
Thank you. Brad?
Before I make my motion, I always, and I've, I've said this before, I always like input from the community. Today, we had two people who showed up from the Villa Madrid, Villa Madrid?
Villa Madrid.
Okay. The Villa Madrid, and you spoke quite well. I appreciate that. But we only had two people out of 22 units show up, not to mention, no one else in that neighborhood showed up to say they were against the building, they thought it was too big, they thought it was not pretty in design. And when we look at buildings, and when I look at buildings, and I understand the argument, I've been on planning and zoning on and off for the past 15 years probably, but long story short is, when we look at these buildings and we say, oh, you should build them smaller or shorter with 36 units, the design comes out a lot differently than when you build and you go up. And I understand the argument not to, and I've turned down plenty of, you know, I voted against plenty of buildings in the past, but looking down the street, and I don't think it's that far away, I honestly think it's around the corner, it might be within 300 feet of this building, is the harborage. And when we say like, oh, it's very close to, and then everyone says, oh, well, we made a mistake with the harborage. Like, I don't know if we made a mistake with the harborage because I wasn't here for the harborage, but, and then we say, well, we're not going to consider what we already approved next door to this, which is similar to this, when I, and I don't know where the slide is, but when we look at what's proposed to be built next door to this, it looks very similar to this building. So I don't see...
This is a different zoning.
Okay. So yes, I have a motion. I, I, I would request a motion to approve, I move to adopt the resolution plan approving the site plan level three, case number UDP S23002, based on the following findings of facts in the city report and testimony heard by the applicant, resolution. And then I don't know, I think there are conditions, right? So the approval of the application is subject to all the conditions included in the city staff report.
Do you accept the, the conditions that were proffered by the applicant on the record? There were several that Stephanie stated on the record.
Yes, and I had asked to include those.
Okay.
Second. We have a second from Mr. McTeague. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Momano?
No.
Ms. Furtick?
No.
Mr. Durango? Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Vannan?
No.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
Six to three.
Very good. Ms. Toothaker, before you take off, are you sticking around for item 11?
I'm staying.
Okay, so I'd like to address your motion for reconsideration at the end of the meeting if that's okay with you. If you were taking off, I'd do it now, but since we have the luxury of having you in the House. All right. As I continue to shuffle the deck, folks, we're now going to go to number one on your agenda.
One more thing, Mr. Chair. Stephanie, can we just get a copy of the voluntary conditions? We don't have it. Thanks. Wherever you are. Okay. Thank you.
That's this one.
We won't let her get away. All right, we're going to go to case, we're going to go to item number one, case UDP P23001. You're here. Welcome. Good evening. Please state your name and your relationship to the case.
Lovely.
You got to turn the microphone on, I think, Elizabeth.
Press.
I'd like to do disclosures. Steve, I'm going to start down there with you. Come in this way.
Site visit.
Site visit.
Site visit.
None.
None.
Site visit.
None.
None.
None. Thank you. Continue, please.
That was pretty much our, we had, we had a PowerPoint to kind of show visually what And I want to make sure it is understood that this is a plat approval. Site plan is not part of...
Any questions for this? And then the rest of it, we're just following in compliance with the underlying zoning of the property.
Well, could you repeat your name for me into the mic?
Yes, my name is Cabot Edouard. I'm the owner of the property.
Thank you.
Marilyn?
No, I'm, I'm fine.
Saw your light on. Good. Sorry. John?
I'm just curious, why did you pick office?
Because it's transitioning. If you know here, this is the back of Whole Foods.
Yeah.
So you have, you know, I forget, this used to be Dunkin' Donuts Blockbuster Video over the years. It's been a lot of different things. Office has, in my opinion, the least amount of trips. It's also the least offensive, you know, being that this is the neighborhood actual, like, you know, faux gate, entry gate is actually like right here.
Right.
So it keeps anything that doesn't have to do with residential on the other side of it. And then, you know, you're not getting retail stuff and lights at night. You know, you're going to have like some professional lawyer.
So you didn't get forced into that, is my point.
Do what?
You voluntarily wanted to do office?
Oh, yeah, because I think it's better for the neighborhood.
That's all I wanted. Thanks.
All right. Not seeing anybody else's light lit up. I guess we'll turn, we'll open it up to the, Mr. Edouard, I see that you've got a thing. Do you want to speak anymore? You've got a speaking slip. Save it for later if there's questions.
Yeah, I'm here for support.
I just didn't know if you had any more comments to make before we open it up to the public.
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. We're just following the underlying zoning.
10-4. Thank you. All right, we're going to open it up now to the public portion of this. I've got a handful of people that have signed up. Reminder, you've got two minutes. When you come up, please state your name. We're going to start with Sal, I believe it's Perez, and then we're going to follow that with James Flavell. So Mr. Perez, and if I didn't say your name correctly, feel free to admonish me publicly.
Sal?
Is Mr. Perez not here?
Is there a Sal here?
Gone once.
Gone.
Gone twice. James Flavell?
There's Mr. Flavell.
Mr. Flavell, come on up and then we're going to follow that with Michael Hamaway. Hamaway.
Please state your name.
I'm James Flavell. I've been a 58-year resident in Fort Lauderdale, 33 years in this neighborhood. We have a special neighborhood, I would consider it, Bow Harbor. It's a single entrance. We worked with the city years ago to create this gate that was mentioned a couple minutes ago, which is just adjacent to the proposed office. I want to thank the city because I think initially, the developer, the owner, Mr. Edouard, came looking for 50 feet and we changed, you all changed it to 75, so thank you for that. Went from, I think, nine to seven lots. Is that correct? But we've been, I could say to a degree, in this neighborhood besieged by development outs, just outside of our gate. They're building a Publix and there have been no amendments to the traffic. And currently, the traffic spills onto that intersection from both the Chipotle, now there's a Total Wine there, also the, the Whole Foods to the north. It's... Well, he said, we were asking to make it a parkland for the city to buy it. And my suggestion would be simply if, if you can spend a hundred and some million dollars to move the trees on La Solis, maybe we could cough up a million dollars and put a nice park there and everyone would be whole. I mean, to some extent, because what this is going to do is put commercial structure, literally adjacent to our gatehouse, not out on the, not out on federal, but actually where the church used to sit. If you notice the original photograph, or the rendering, it showed the church itself and this is sitting basically inside of what was our neighborhood, where the church was. They're going to put office at that space. So I'm asking you to reconsider it. Why don't you maybe go check out what Commissioner Herbst was asking for, which was for maybe the city to make some green space. I noticed driving down Miami Road the other day, I was very happy to see that a couple lots had been purchased and there's a park there where there didn't used to be. That would be very nice for this location, which has become highly dense, densified. I don't know if that's a word.
It is now.
It sounds like one.
Thank you, thank you. But yeah, let's be creative and take a little pressure off this very special neighborhood. Thank you. Yes.
Could you point out on the drawing that's there where this gatehouse is?
The gatehouse is right here and the bill, the track is right there. So as you enter our neighborhood, there's actually a median, a little median, and there's a gatehouse right, right here. So you're, we would be coming into the neighborhood past this, this office structure.
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying.
Right now, there's, there's basically a structure here, which is where the Blockbuster once was, and there was a Pier One, and they're both moved out towards Federal Highway.
A large parking lot. A large structure and a large parking lot. I walked it, but you're saying there wasn't a lot of people there and there wasn't traffic? You weren't in...
There was some traffic, you know. I don't think churches are getting the traffic unfortunately that they used to, but in this case, it was very manageable.
Okay. Thank you.
So yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
Hey, do you have a question?
I have a question for the applicant.
Okay.
Since you're already standing there.
Sure.
Is there a reason you, you didn't also make that lot residential?
It's not zoned residential. So the plat is actually going per the underlying zoning that's been established by the city.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So the zoning, as it comes through here, this is actually, if you go to the property, about an eight to 10-foot wall that follows and actually carves this out and then follows back behind where they're building the new Publix and everything else. So all this is...
If we can have the applicant speak into the microphone, please.
Excuse me. So all this was, is platted and divided per the city's zoning that already exists. You can see the B1 and RS8. That fourth. We're not, we're not asking for anything.
We're aware of that.
I'd also like to point out, as you proceed towards Federal Highway, and again, the underlying in use restriction was, I would like to speak to the fact of it being a park. Yes, the city has approached me and as of like minutes before coming here, I have received an offer from the city to make it a park, but again, that doesn't have anything to do with what we're here today.
Correct.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Hang, hang on.
I'm sorry.
Are you done?
I just had another question. It, in the, like, they don't have specific development office plans right now. Would, question for the city attorney, it sounds like there's interest from the city potentially in buying it as a park. Obviously, the owner would have to agree to that if they were, would it also make sense for us to include in addition to office, like, potential park use on the plat?
No.
Okay.
So we can't, we can't impose upon the applicant the proposed restrictions on the plat. That would be a legal taking of his property.
That's not what I'm suggesting. If the applicant agreed to make, allow it to be either office or park, could we, could we do that?
So the issue with the plat notes is that the county requires him to designate the uses on his plat for the purposes of calculating impact fees. So he has to say, this is what we can restrict this property to. The actual development of the property would come back as a different development permit, but in order for him to develop the residential, he needs, or he needs to plat the property and so he's including the entire site in the platting and based on his testimony, he chose the less intrusive commercial use to restrict that prop, that parcel to. But again, that's for the purposes of plating the property so that he can develop the, the land. The development or the proposed development of that actual commercial piece would have to come through as a separate development permit.
And what is the allowable height in B1 for commercial development?
We'd have to turn to the planners to answer that.
The maximum height is 150 feet in B1.
Because I've seen in other plats before that the height, or the number of stories is also restricted.
It would be restricted because it's adjacent to residential zone and land use.
That site is awfully restricted. I think you're going to have a hard time...
You probably would not be able to build that height due to the constraints.
I'm thinking you're probably right, Jim.
Yes.
And if, and if the city ever does buy it from Mr. Edouard, it'll be just like the second half of our agenda that we're going to go through and probably get unanimous approvals for changing.
Agreed to a less intense use. I understand the concern that you don't want people coming, they don't want people coming through the gate to access a commercial use, but if there's an accessibility on the outside of the gate to get to that, then, then I have no problem with. But I do have an issue, and I'm bringing this to the staff. If the city is interested in purchasing this as a park and has actually made an offer, do we interfere with that, that process by plating this at this time? Do we change the value of the property so that the city will actually have to pay more for the site? And is that relevant?
I'll answer the last question first. It's not relevant to the decision as to whether or not the plat meets the code's requirement for plat...
I think they'd have to cross over the residential unit on the corner if they didn't access it anywhere from where you're suggesting. I don't, the, the other part does not face the interior residential street. The only access is from that entry road.
Yeah, I agree that the only access is from the entry, gate.
Right.
But if the concern of the community...
Not the gate, not the gate. The road before the gate.
Yeah, well, that leads to the gate, doesn't it?
No, but anyway.
Wait.
It's on the exit side.
I'll defer to the city attorney, but I don't think it's legal to restrict someone's access to their property and this is the only street that it faces.
Right.
I'm not asking you to restrict access to your property. I'm asking you to limit the access to the property to address the concerns that we've seen expressed, that by coming through the gate with commercial users and then accessing that lot might be problematic. I'm only asking you...
That's why I'm trying to explain to you that the gate is actually here. So the, unless you made, like, missed the turn, you wouldn't, there's no reason for you to go that way anyways.
Well, if there's no reason for you to go that way anyway, then there should be no concern on your part about putting a, a further note on the plat that access to that commercial use is restricted to that one access point.
May I, may I jump in for just a minute? When the plat is reviewed by the city, we look at the impacts of doing that, the exact thing that you're saying, is if we restrict the access to a certain point, does it have an impact on other aspects of the adjacent properties to the network, how close it is to other roadways?
Right.
Staff did not look at that. We looked at what was submitted and evaluated it. In addition to the county's process for the plat, since this is adjacent to or close to US1, FDOT, Florida Department of Transportation, will be looking at that as well because you can have impacts onto federal highway within so many distance from a state road. So if the applicant wanted us to look at it again, we'd have to go back and do an analysis and review to see what kind of impacts there are by restricting the access.
Uh huh. Okay, well, all right. I would like to do... I would like to do that, just saying. Just saying.
It's up to the applicant.
To me, I don't, that comes up when that property is submitted for its own site plan approval. That's when all that's discussed. Again, we're only talking about the plat, and the plat is being done per the city's zoning, not, not anything that I chose. So this is the underlying zoning that's been set forth by the city, and all we're doing is bringing the property into compliance. Now, as far as it relates to the future development of this property, as staff can tell you, that's when, like several of the other people that were here, you submit a full DRC package, and it would come before you again, and we can talk about where, you know, the egress in, in everything of the property is, which is already, you know, in that event, would be that way, because it's the easiest way to get in and out. And like I said, the gatehouse is here, there's, there's no reason to go into the neighborhood, circle back, and come back around. I mean, that doesn't even make logical sense.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate your analysis there, and I'm not sure that it'll come back to us, because it may be just a small building, and there's no guarantee that it will come back to us, but that's not the, the issue. I hear what you're saying about that it's not practical, it's, it's, it's very likely that the access, when this project comes back, either as of right, without us, or for some special thing, that we would be looking at it again. So, I'm, I'm comfortable, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Edward, I think Mr. Bronco's got a question or comment.
Can I just ask, did we close the public hearing?
No, we have not. We still have two more speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then there may be some beyond that. John, you done, oh, okay, sorry, thank you.
And very little mentioned, there was a little bit, the developer talked about this wall that's eight to 10 feet, and that's correct. That wall surrounds this entire neighborhood, and, and cordons it off from Federal Highway. So on one side, you have a very prominent walled structure, and on the other side, you have the intercoastal. And, and again, I, if you haven't been there, you have to go in and look at it. The church is, was and is an essential part of this, was an essential part of this neighborhood, the vibe and the feel. It is a large parking lot, but it was never full, except on Monday after, mornings, when there was a food giveaway for charity purposes. My kids, my seven, now seventeen and fourteen-year-old son, I taught them how to skateboard and, and ride their bicycles in that parking lot, as a lot of the people here did as well. And yes, I understand that it's a site, just a site plan approval, but when I hear the developer get up and talk about how, you know, this could have been a 7-Eleven, but hey, I'm doing you a favor by putting in an, an office building, you know, my blood kind of chills a little bit, because that's, it doesn't matter. An office building is a disaster for this community, and this Bow Harbor community. It would, it completely would damage the character of the neighborhood, it's not compatible. I understand that, how it was zoned, but it was a church. It's almost like a sad Leonard Cohen song, you know, we're losing churches, but we're getting office buildings, you know? And I'm one of these guys who looks at the green space shrinking everywhere in our city, you know, the, the big lawn in front of Landmark Bank Building, that's now a, you know, a, a twenty-story tower, you know, with a lot line that you could, you know, trip over. This is not an appropriate utilization of this property as an office building, and, and it's not as a 7-Eleven or anything else. And so, I just wanted to voice my objection on behalf of myself and the community of the Bow Harbor, who also internally voted by a very high percentage, eighty-plus, ninety percent, the position that I'm talking about. So that's 150 residents, 150 of your constituents, who have all come in with the same view. So, you know, that's really all I, I had to say, and, and I thank you very much for taking the time to consider my, my opinion.
Mr. Hamaway, just one question, it has really nothing to do with this. I'm just curious, you're the second person to mention the park. Has your neighborhood talked about it in your homeowners association?
Yes, yes.
And do they embrace it? The only reason I ask, because I live in a very similar neighborhood, very close to you guys, and we had a lot in there that was problematic, and we wanted to make it into a pocket park, and half the neighborhood didn't want it. So if you guys have got consensus, then I'm sure Mr. Herbst would be interested in your 150 votes.
Well, we're, we did get consensus, and it was a great example of, you know, of a community speaking in a democratic fashion. Some people were concerned, there was discussion about whether a park would bring, you know, a crime, and, and as a community, we got together, we formed a subcommittee within our community, we went out and explored other parquettes, like the one at Imperial Point, which I just read sadly in the newspaper, was going to be taken away, potentially to make oddly enough a parking lot for the hospital. And, and it's that type of development that I just don't think is good for, for the city. But, you know, again, it's, this particular community is so unique, the way it looks and feels as you enter it, the tamarind trees, you know, the gumbo limbos that are now on the perimeter, that are going to be basically, you know, torn up to make townhomes, you know, I, okay, you know, we could, I think we can all live with townhomes in our neighborhood, it's, we're going to lose a big, well, I'm speaking for myself, I, I-
You better grab a seat while you can.
Yeah, I, I mean, but I-
They're droning on you.
Yeah, but, but I think, but the idea, for me, the idea that there, that this is a, you know, that this is a, a, a property that's suitable to be broken up and split up, it's just not consistent with the way it, it, it feels or looks right now, and, you know, it's, it's, it's that type of situation, thank you.
And as mentioned, this is just a plat approval, so you'll have ample opportunities in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Virginia Holden.
I'm trying to find this property. Hi there, my name's Virginia Holden, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I echo everything Mike Hamaway has said. I mean, I, I was born in Holy Cross Hospital many, many years ago. I moved in the Bow Harbor in 1970, till about 1980, and then back in 97. We loved the neighborhood so much, when we got married, we bought a home, and remodeled, and loved the neighborhood. us, the developer had to reduce the number of homes, because it wasn't compatible. Originally, he wanted smaller lots. Again, we showed up, we voiced our concerns, and he had to change it to 75 feet. We're, we're under siege in Bow Harbor. We've asked for a taller wall, which you'll hear about from another speaker, that was ignored. The traffic coming in and out of 19th Street off of Federal is a nightmare. And once the Publix is built, and those other businesses, like Whole Foods, all converge on our ex, on 19th Street, they don't realize there's a neighborhood back there. I will, I go through that intersection with my hand on the horn and my foot on the brake, because every day, it's near misses. And how the county and city approved that development of the redevelopment of the Publix is beyond me. They've made no concessions of anything we asked.
There's two, there's two. Yeah.
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 It's, okay.
Hi, thank you. Hi, my name's Nancy Garcia with Urban Design and Planning. So the subdivision regulations require the 75 with lots, but the actual RS8 zoning district require, allows the 55. So when they first submitted for DRC, they went with the RS8 regulations, but because they're proposing something new, they have to follow the subdivision regulations, which require the 75. So that's, that's what happened in the course of the, of the case.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, I have nobody else signed up. Is there anybody, is there, okay. Were you sworn in, sir? Come on up. Watch your step. Thank you, sir. If you would please state your name for the record.
Uh, Duck Fulcher, and I'm at 2200 Northeast 19th Street, and I live right where my finger is here on the map, directly across from the church. And the part that, I don't think anyone in the neighborhood has any problem with the seven homes going in. It's this commercial part that's got everybody up in arms, because we really don't know what, what to expect there. And with my house, looking right into it, I didn't know it was a piece of commercial property there, nobody knew that. So you've been wondering, okay, what's this going to be for my property values down the road, for what happens there? And I've lived here six years now, and the map doesn't show it, but right where the Publix is getting redeveloped, we had an HH Greg and a Panera there. Well, that, well, Panera didn't begin to generate enough traffic to fill that lot. I would walk through there, and you see illicit activity going on at night, during the day, with people changing their clothes and so forth, in this back lot here, because it's never really utilized by a shopping center. That only fills up two days a week, Thanksgiving Eve and Christmas Eve. Other than that, this lot stays empty, just like it shows right now. The developer had said in a previous meeting, he was going to put a wall separating the commercial from the residential. I question what a three-sided area is going to be like for people going in and do whatever they want to do at night, and I have to look at it. So, that's one thing. The other thing I wanted to point out is, we mentioned the traffic problem that's here, because this is so landscaped, they see a gate, and people moving between the two shopping centers just do not realize that's a public street. And when Virginia said, you know, you drive with your, your foot on the brake and on the horn, it's the most dangerous intersection I drive through. You have to watch people like a hawk through there. The last thing anyone wants is something that's going to be generating more traffic through here, because they're going, they don't recognize it being a residential street. They look at it as part of the shopping center. Possession is nine-tenths of the law. So, that was pretty much-
Would you support if they came in and asked to rezone that lot as residential? Would you support that to be more residential?
Absolutely.
Okay.
22nd Avenue, right here, this piece of property is big enough to accommodate two homes with the special zoning that Bow Harbor has, because it's about 19,500 square feet, I think. But I haven't found anybody, I've talked to the neighborhood, has any objection on two homes going there, because that would be just more continuation of the neighborhood. It's that commercial piece of property that just is owed a character with the rest of the neighborhood. And I realize that's not what y'all are here for, but-
Thank you, sir.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
When you imagine, like, the worst-case scenario of what could get built there, like, what do you picture? Because it's not really like a big lot. In my mind, in, in my mind, I'm picturing like, like a three, a 4,000-square-foot, like, office for a doctor or something, in front of the gate, like, and I don't, I don't understand what's so harmful about that. Like, what are you imagining?
Well, I think it's, I think it's great that he said he was going to be an office, because that would be the less use of it. But I don't, but is that really, is that carved in concrete in any way, just because he says that's what he's going to do?
Yes, it's, it's, it's required as part of this approval.
So, um, when I think, I think a commercial, I can think of most anything, and maybe it starts off as office, and then it turns into something else down the road. The fact that if it was either a park or two homes, that pretty much cements it for the future, as opposed to something commercial.
We're, we're, we're drifting off course here in talking about what's, what-ifs and all that. So, at the end of the day, the zoning is what the zoning is, and it's limited to certain uses, certain sizes, setbacks, and so forth. I think if and when somebody, whether it's Mr. Edward, or maybe you guys get the park, bring it forward, that's going to be your chance, when you guys can echo concern if they do something outside of their ability under that zoning. We're not changing the zoning here, the underlying zoning is B1. So that's staying with it, no matter how much arguing there is tonight, that's the way it's going to be when everybody leaves, so.
I think part of us are, are kind of a little emotional about it, because it would change the character of the neighborhood, and plus the fact, we just really don't know what's planned for it. We just hear commercial, and we're just up in, you know, it's just like, okay, what does that really mean?
I, like all you guys, grew up in the area, I had a lot of friends who grew up in there, in fact, I almost mentioned to you a name, but I'm glad I didn't, since you were there for so long. That's a fantastic neighborhood, and nothing's ever going to happen to that to where you guys are set back. And I'd bet a lot of money on that, not even that commercial piece, but having concerned citizens is what it's all about. That's, that's, you know, to have you guys out here voicing that concern, we hear you, we hear you.
I, I said, I've been there six years, I bought the house because I liked the house. After I got into it, that's when I really realized how that's, that neighborhood's really a special neighborhood. Everyone really looks at it full in body, and we have an internal email system, and so we're able to communicate and talk, it's a great place.
You're in a great neighborhood.
So.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard on this? Okay, wow. All right, let's do this. Why don't you guys come file up? You've got two minutes each. Has everybody been sworn in?
I have not.
Okay.
Please raise your hand, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right. So if you weren't here to be sworn in earlier, everybody's got two minutes to speak. When the dinger goes off, the hook comes out.
All right, if you would, sir, state your name for the record.
Charles Donato, I've lived there, Bow Harbor, for 12 years now. The only thing I want to point out is the discussion on where the gatehouse is, and how that affects it. And for those of you who have gone there and looked, when you pull up to the gatehouse and stop and wait for that to open, it's not just where the gate is. If there's two cars waiting, the access to where he's calling this commercial piece, right now, there is a single driveway, it's listed as one-way going in. I do not believe that you can fit a two-way entrance in that to make it a commercial property. And I would assume, if you look at how this was all zoned originally, and I don't know why this piece didn't go with the rest of it, but all the access to commercial, everything is through the entrance off of 19th Street up here. You come in, you go in. There's a wall here, and his access would be further down. If you go look, I don't believe you can make an entrance there for a full two-way in and out, with the way that the gatehouse is. And it's not just the gatehouse, there's landscaping there, so that you know that you're stopped for it. So do you rip out that landscaping so you can make the turn in? It's difficult.
Well, that's for the future developer to work out with, with the city planners, but noted, hear you. Thank you, sir, and thanks for yielding time back to us.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ram Levy, I'm the new neighbors, basically only two years in this neighborhood. I obviously grew in Israel, but I'm, the last 10 years live in Miami. So I moved, when I knew that I want to move to Fall Odell, I didn't even know about this place. I always used to go to Panera, and I saw a little gate, I thought it's like a little condo. The first time the gate opened, and I saw like, all the houses on the water, I was in shock. In my job, I'm a real estate agent, so obviously I found a new gen, like, okay, this is amazing, I'm going to bring people here. I sold already like three or four houses there, and I'm trying to form in the area. So I want to ask the developer, is somebody that lived there and also do real estate, everybody's, I think, afraid also from the prices going down and affecting our neighborhood beside the Publix and the traffic that everybody talks, I'm not going to take the time for that. But if you're building, like, commercials, and obviously you're doing it because, that's fine, everybody do it for the money, developer, and I respect that, that you're a businessman, so you want to get more, more money for your houses that you're building, if I want to buy a house, and I'm going to have in my back of my house, commercial building in my back, I, my house is going to be worth less money. So if you're going to think to put maybe another two houses over there, everybody's going to be happy, we're going to be happy, you're going to be happy, everybody's going to make more money, and keep the value of our neighborhood that is really, really, really special. To add another commercial building here beside what everybody's talking, you really have to draw there to see. Because I think, Merlin, you asked about the gate, but people don't realize, between the gate and where we're talking about, it's not even that distance. It's like, I don't know in faith, because I'm from Israel, but this is not even the, the, the commercial, and this is the gate. It's like half of that. It's very, very, very short. So if you guys wasn't there, if you're going to drive one time, I think you're going to see what everybody's talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Samuel Leveneau, I'm also a recent resident of Bow Harbor, and thank you all for your time, and thank you, the developer, for having made the changes we've made. And I just want to point out that the majority of the concern in the neighborhood comes from, initially, the first proposal was for- comes from, initially, the first proposal was for nine homes and townhomes where the commercial lot was. And I don't want to misstate myself or anybody that has done any work for it, but that was the initial intention, to bring this up for residential in both the residential zoning and the commercial zoning. I believe that meeting had a... And, and kind of makes feeling, you know, coming from the community. Everything else that everybody has brought on is what everybody feels. You know, the gate, the traffic today, as I was driving here, my hand was on the horn and my foot was on the brake, because somebody came out of where the new Publix is. No stop, you know, they just came right in. So those are the concerns that everybody has, and, and we just want to make sure that the community stays the type of community it is.
Understood.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Last call. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none. We'll close the public portion of these items and bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion. Yes, sir.
Question for staff. If, if the applicant had wanted to just change that one piece, ask for a rezoning to, to residential, would they have been able to without first plating it?
No, but that's, the plat, the plating situation is not what constrains whether or not, whether or not they could rezone the property. It's the underlying land use. So in order to
I see.
do residential on a residentially land use
Commercial land use.
parcel, they would have to find flex units or to apply to, to that property, or do a complete amendment to the Broward County land use plan in order to make that happen.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
John?
Question for the developer. So I asked you about the 10,000 square feet earlier, and you said you did that voluntarily. Have you done any plans to determine whether or not you can fit a 10,000 square foot office building on that property?
No, I have not.
And have you, how did you come up with 10,000 square feet, then?
It's essentially, pretty much half the size of the lot. You know, after you get civil and everything else involved, you're not gonna get 10,000 feet. I mean, after all the setbacks and everything else.
So why not ask for something like 4,000 feet? Because I just did a quick calc on it, and I'm thinking, with that depth lot, you could single-load it and probably get 16 parking spaces on it, which will get you four per thousand. So that would be about 4,000 square feet of office. I mean, is that something you could live with? Because I'm looking at the potential for that lot, and I, I just don't see it.
Either way, the lot, whatever's being, would potentially be put there, still has to go through DRC and be site plan approved at no matter what size it is. This is B1 zoning. So all I'm, what I've done is restrict it from B1, which could be honey baked ham, a car dealership, everything else, to like, when you think, like, go through and read B1. I could have, I could have the Hustler store there, okay? It could be open 24 hours a day. So what I've chosen to do, because, again, I'm not, this isn't here to change zoning, or for site plan approval, or for anything else, is I'm just taking the existing land use and dividing it up based on the zoning that's been provided by the city to the property that I own. So I'm not, we're not asking for anything. When you go down to it being restricted more, all you're doing is putting additional and additional and additional restrictions on a property, which I don't, like, to what end do I put restrict, I might, like, I tie my hands and just make it so I'm not allowed to do anything there? I mean, I've already put, in my opinion, like, a tight rope on whether I would do it or myself. And I do appreciate where everyone's coming from as they speak when they're here, but I really would like everybody to understand something. Number one, my family's been here since 1918. My grandfather was the first federal judge and the first state senator of Broward County. He desegregated all the schools here, the beaches here. He has a historical marker at A1A in La Solis. Like, I've been here for a long, my entire life. So has my family. When we do this, I'm not some guy just doing this to go sell it to Lennar. I'll build every single square inch that's here. I'll be the one building it. I'm also the chairman of the Community Appearance Board. We've won awards from the city of Fort Lauderdale, I'm pretty sure, every year for decades and decades and decades running. So it becomes very personal to me. I put a lot of time into this. We build and strive to build the best stuff in the city every single time. So I'm not, you know, I hear what you're saying, but all I'm doing is literally dividing it per, like, I'm not asking for anything other than what has been provided to me by the city, and all I'm doing is bringing a property that's been in non-compliance into compliance.
So, and I'm just gonna continue to ask you about this square footage. So I just, I'm looking for an explanation as to how you came up with 10,000 versus 20,000.
Well, first of all, the underlying zoning allows for 150 feet. So if you went up 150 feet, you could, getting 10,000 feet is not a challenge when you go 150 feet tall.
I'm not asking you what the zoning says. I'm asking you, how did you come up, how did you calculate 10,000 square feet made sense for you there? Was it a random choice?
It's a, it's a, what I considered a fair number of what should be there and not going for, literally what it's allowed to be there, which is far beyond 10,000 feet.
Is that in the backup, or was that something that he proffered in conversation, the 10,000 feet?
That's on the plat.
That's a decision that I've chosen, and then it, it's recorded in, out throughout the life of the plat, recorded in Broward County and in the city of Fort Lauderdale.
And it was my first question to you earlier in the night, because I thought that was kind of random. The potential for retail there is much better. To build office in that area, it's a stinker project. It's hard to lease that stuff out, and I just don't understand it. And I thought maybe the city had forced your hand in that.
I had spoken with the city prior to even purchasing this property about doing a zoning change to residential. The city, when I met with zoning, they said absolutely not. There's no way on this earth that they would change it to that. If you literally zoom out, this line follows Federal Highway all the way down. This little piece follows in line with the back of Publix and all that. And I can appreciate, again, where everybody, how they feel about Whole Foods and Publix, I don't own either one of those. Like, that has nothing to do with me, again. So I can appreciate that the Publix was approved, and all this stuff is being built here, you know, that is all retail, but that, that, that isn't me. And it, and it doesn't actually have anything to really do, at the end of the day, with what we're talking about here.
Question for staff related to what he just said. Flex residential is not permitted in that land use?
Well, first, I don't know what happened in preliminary meetings or discussed about that. Usually, we state the facts and what's possible for properties to be rezoned or anything like that. In this case, we have no more flex units. So to go to residential, you could not do, unless you do a land use change, a full land use plan amendment change, because that piece is commercial land use. In order to rezone it to residential, you have to do flex. We don't have any flex, so that's not possible.
How about affordable flex?
You can do affordable, because it's commercial, but the problem is, this does not meet the qualifications, because it doesn't directly front Federal Highway, and that's one of the requirements.
Anything else, Sean? Sherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could get a clarification from Mr. Spence. The plating, if approved today as, as submitted, would it preempt or prevent in any way the development of a park instead of commercial use?
Deputy City Attorney Dwayne Spence, it does not.
So a park could ultimately happen in that spot with the plat being approved as it is submitted today?
Correct.
Thank you.
Jay, do you have another question?
No, I could make a comment and then a motion.
So, before you do, then you can roll your comment into your motion. If you sit here and look at this from a different perspective logically, if you were to
On, first of all, you can't do townhomes in RS8. He's not changing that, so there's no possibility to just decide to change for him to just build townhomes. That's misinformation. I mean, the, the lot sizes are the same size, more or less, as if all the other lot sizes in the neighborhood. 9,000 square feet, they, they're in accordance with the subdivision.
The neighborhood is no larger than
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so the, the lot sizes are like 9,000 square feet. We have RS8 in Tarpon River, and our, our lot sizes are 6,000. So I, I, that's totally reasonable. This isn't a site plan approval. We're not approving any buildings right now. He, we, he, he needs to plat this in order to actually do anything with it whatsoever, and he can't do anything else with that piece. There's nothing else he can do. He can't make it a residential, because the land use is, is commercial. There's nothing else he could do. So that's all he can do, and he's restricting it to office to, for the betterment of the community. So I, I don't really, like, think that there's anything short of getting an actual land use amendment for the site, which in the six years that I've been on the board, I've never seen once. And it would have to go all the way through the county and everything. I don't see that being a possibility. So I, that being said, I'm gonna move to approve.
Before you do that, is there anybody else that wants to comment on this? Steve, do I see your, or Mary?
You saw mine, but I really, isn't on this, but I really feel like it would be beneficial for this neighborhood to have somebody from the city come talk to them about the multiple issues that we've heard testimony about tonight. If, in fact, the city told the, told the applicant that they could not do anything but commercial on this site, I think that would have been helpful for the neighborhood to know at some point before everybody came tonight, and also just the traffic situation in it. So I know this has nothing to do with the motion that Jay's getting ready to move, to make, but after hearing all of this, I really feel like somebody from the city needs to go to their association meeting to talk about what they can do to address some of the traffic issues. So, thank you. And they did nothing. Yeah.
Mr. Gannon?
Yeah, just one thing. Although I don't know this gentleman personally, his, his firm has built four homes in my, in my neighborhood and on my street, and, and his people are very considerate and honest about what they say and what they do. They've also helped some of the folks that were adjacent to them moving some trees, different things that were, that were maybe encroaching and whatnot. So my opinion is, you can trust what he says, pretty, you know, really.
Thank you, sir. Jay?
Okay, item one. So move to approve, case number UDP P23001, plat review. And I find that it meets the ULDR Sections 47, 25.5 subdivision regulations and Section 47, 25.2 adequacy requirements.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Patrick McTeague. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Barak?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Ms. Maman?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Barak?
Yes.
Mr. Schekman?
Yes.
Mr. Gannett?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Vice Chair Coles?
No.
Chair Whitman?
Yes.
Eight to one.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Chair, may I jump in there for a second for the next items?
I hear, oh, okay.
Items three, four, five, and six on the agenda are all rezonings where the applicant is the city. If it's acceptable to the board, the case planner, Michael Ferreira, could give an overview and then talk about each item separately for the vote, if that's acceptable.
That is more than acceptable with me, but I'll ask the rest of the board as soon as we clear the hall. All right, so for those of you that didn't hear, Mr. Hetzel said that items, as printed, three, four, five, and six are all the cities, and they would be willing to present them all at once, but we would still vote on them
Vote separately, correct.
individually. So is there, can I get a motion to do that?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
How about it? You got four to one here, four to one ratio.
Can we go backwards? Who made the motion? Thank you. And second?
Patrick McTeague.
Thank you.
I try to make this quick.
You would be a new hero in the building.
Good evening, board members. Michael Ferreira, urban planner, case planner for the next four items. So as you're aware, the city has been working on an initiative to rezone city property that's been utilized as park or open space, that is not zoned for parks, recreation, and open space, to be rezoned to the parks, recreation, and open space zoning districts. There's been a total about, it's been identified that about 40 properties need to be rezoned, and due to the number of properties that need to be rezoned, they're being done in phases. We've completed three phases thus far, with a total of 18 properties that have been rezoned. And these next four items are part of Phase Four. So for item UDP Z23012, the request is to rezone 7,354 square feet of land located south of Ponce de Leon Drive, east of Southeast Ninth Avenue, west of Southeast Eleventh Street, and north of Southeast Eleventh Street, from residential, single-family, low-medium-density RS8 district to Parks, Recreation, and Open Space District. The park, the property is currently a passive park, and it's known as Hector Park.
Mr. Ferreira, before you move on to the next case, I don't know if you're getting ready to do that. Since you're doing these one at a time, I'd like to give the board an opportunity to comment if they do, and also members of, of, of
Understood.
Public, okay. Are you ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay, so does anybody have a question or a comment for Mr. Ferreira?
Are we, are we doing this one at a time with motions or with presentation?
No, 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 no. I'm just, while he introduces them, I want to be able to have comment to that item, so we don't get confused down the road, and also see if there's any public input. And then we'll, and then we'll vote on these individually. But he's, he's putting them all out there kind of quickly, and I'm assuming there's gonna be probably very little comment based on the past four or five months that we've been doing this. So is there any comment from the board? Hearing none. Open up for public discussion. Anyone? Hearing, seeing none. Close public discussion. Go on to the next case, please.
Just, sorry, just wanted to clarify which case number it is. Is it UDP Z23012? Okay, thanks. Item three.
Sure.
So the next item, item four, UDP Z23013, the request is to rezone 18,358 square feet of land located south of Southwest Fourth Street, east of Southwest Eleventh Avenue, north of Waverly Road, and west of Southwest Tenth Avenue, from residential, multifamily, low-rise, medium-high-density RML25 district to Parks, Recreation, and Open Space District. This property is currently a passive park. It's known as Major William Lauderdale Park.
Okay. Again, any questions or comments from the board? Hearing, seeing none. Open it up for public hearing. Any questions or comments from the public? Looks like a bunch of lawyers out there to me, but anyway. Hearing, seeing none. We'll close it, bring it back. Let's go on to, case, or item number five.
Item number five, UDP Z23014, the request is to rezone 15,879 square feet of land located south of Southeast Tenth Street, east of Southeast Ninth Avenue, and north of Real Vista Boulevard, from residential, single-family, low-medium-density RS8 district to Parks, Recreation, and Open Space District. This park is, it's currently a park. It's Virginia, Virginia Schuman Young Park.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Open up public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this item? Hearing, seeing none. Close public discussion. Bring it back for the last item.
Item number six, UDP Z23015, the request is to rezone 76,273 square feet of land located at 2, 2,600 and 2,450 South Federal Highway, from heavy commercial, light industrial B3 district to Parks, Recreation, and Open Space District.
Is that it? Any questions, comments from the board?
Just clarification. Oh, that's that big triangle piece over there?
Welcome Park.
On the corner of 84?
It's the Welcome Park.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Just wanted to get that out of the way.
I just was trying to get my bearings, and there was no area on it. I was having a hard time, but I see it over here now.
Anyone else? We'll go ahead and open up public portion of this item. Anybody wish to be heard on this? Hearing, seeing none. Hearing, seeing none. We'll close the public portion. Bring it back. Bring it back to the board to work through, starting back at item number three, which is case UDP Z two, three, zero, one, two. Does anybody wish to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to move to recommend approval of case number UDP Z two, three, zero, one, two, or something like that.
That is correct.
Based on the findings of fact, the staff report, and that we find that the application meets the criteria, the ULDR.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any additional conversation? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Ms. Maman?
She stepped out. Maybe save her for the last. Now you gotta start over, which buys us a little time.
Okay, let's go again. Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Drag your feet? Hang on. You got a sneeze coming, don't you, or something?
I put him in second. That'll be.
It's gone away.
Ms. Maman, how do you feel about that?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Wayman?
Yes.
Chair Wayman?
Call me anything but late for dinner. Yes. So motion passes unanimously. All right. So we're going on to the case UDP Z two, three, zero, one, three, which is item four on your agenda. Somebody would like to make a motion?
I move to recommend approval of case number Z two, three, zero, one, three, based on the findings of, findings of fact and the staff report and that it meets the application applicable criteria.
Second.
Was that you, Jay?
Jay Scheckman, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Maman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Wayman?
Yes. Item passes unanimously. Item five, case number UDP Z two, three, zero, one, four. Does somebody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make that motion. I move that the planning and zoning board determines that the, that the application meets the criterias provided in this section and the planning and zoning board shall recommend that the rezoning be approved or recommend a rezoning to a more restrictive district than that was requested in the application, if necessary, to ensure compliance with the criteria for zoning and if consented to by the applicant.
Recommend approval, correct, is the motion? Marilyn?
Yes.
Yes, good, thanks.
Did you, did you say the case number?
Z two, three, zero, one, five?
Zero, one, four.
No, 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 no.
We're on item five.
Z two, three, zero, one, four.
Zero, one, four. I don't have four. So somebody else will have to do it. I have six and five.
Mary, you want, you want, you want to make a motion on zero, two, one?
I move to recommend approval of case number Z two, three, oh, UDP Z two, three, zero, one, four.
I was four.
Based on the findings of fact and the staff report and that we find the application meets the applicable criteria.
All right. We have a new motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Patrick McTeague. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Ms. Maman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Wayman?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Item number six, case number UDP Z two, three, zero, one, five. Somebody like to make a motion? Marilyn?
Yeah, I would like to make the motion on Z two, three, zero, one, five. I move that the, let me find the language. I'm sorry. I should have gotten this more together. Okay. I move that the planning and zoning board determines that the application meets the criterias provided in this section. The planning and zoning board shall determine that the rezoning be approved or recommend a zoning to a more restrictive zoning district. We're on six, right? Just application, if necessary, to ensure compliance with the criteria of the zoning and if consented to by the applicant.
Motion to recommend approval.
Motion to recommend approval.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Ms. Maman?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Wayman?
Yes. Item passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Now we're going on to item number eight, case UDP.
Request for rezoning to Northwest Regional Activities Center Mixed Use West from a residential, this is for one fourteen oh nine Sistrunk Boulevard, the YMCA down here to LA Lee, YMCA Mizel Community Center. The issue is that the why was asked by the city when we built the property through the CRA and with the city commission to activate the street, we put seventy-four hundred square feet of retail space on the front end of the building and currently subleasing that out to five tenants. And during the course of getting a permit, we discovered that it was not properly zoned for a retail business. So we have five tenants in there, the city of Fort Lauderdale Police Substation in Bay One, Bayes Two and Three are Holy Cross Hospital. There wasn't an issue there, but Bayes Four and Five are with a pharmacy, Optimal Pharmacy, that became retail. Bay Seven, Six is a hair salon and Bay Seven and Eight is a salad boss. So working with the city for the past several months, we have complied with everything, building out the space. Now we're into the rezoning application. So the good news is all bays are leased and in construction and or soon to be opened or are opened. And the other good news is we have complied with the city's request to activate it with minority-owned businesses in that of the non-institutional governmental entities, all five of the tenants in the spaces are minority-owned and women-owned businesses. So we've tried to activate it and to create jobs in the local community and business in the local community. So that's all I have. Nicholas is here someplace. I've been, he's now my personal best friend through all of this process, but we're here.
Any questions for the applicant? What's it feel like to have a hundred percent occupancy?
Very good. Given the fact that was part of what we tried to do is the rates, the market rate, these are below market rates, working with the CRA. And it was a challenge to get a boot tenant especially, but they are in there and they got their CO Friday and will have their grand opening here in a few days.
Good for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I was actually on the CRA when we passed the YMCA.
Oh, really?
On a different board, but that was great.
So at this point, we're going to open up to the public for any public comment or input. Hearing, seeing none. We'll close it. Bring it back to the board. Any more questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Marilyn?
There you go.
Unless you want to make it since you were on that board, but I'll do it. I move to approve UDP Z two, three, oh, oh, nine. And I, that the planning and zoning board determines that the application meets the criteria as provided in section four, seven, dash, twenty-four point four, rezoning. The planning and zoning board shall recommend that the rezoning be approved or recommend a rezoning to a more restrictive zoning district than that that was requested in the application, if necessary, to ensure compliance with the criteria for the zoning and if consented to by the applicant.
Motion to recommend approval based on the criteria in the ULDR.
Motion to recommend the approval on, based on the criteria in the ULDR.
Thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Ms. Maman?
Yes.
Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Wayman?
Real quick, before I vote, just for note of fact, and I saw him leave, so I didn't call him, but I had a request to speak by Ted and Sarah, but he left, so I didn't want anybody to think that I just ignored him, but he's not in the building. Yes. All right, congratulations. Go make some money.
Good job.
Go make some money.
It's something established as far, as far as a priority in a planning initiative, which this project has fallen in our initiative schedules, in our initiative schedules, along with downtown, beach, and other areas of the city. Here's the timeline. It's been many, many years we've worked on this. We started in twenty fourteen and to twenty nineteen to where we are now in twenty twenty-three. Planning takes a long time. That's why I think it's called planning to begin with. The area is on the northern end of the city, three hundred and twenty-three acres. It's bound by I ninety-five on the east. City limits on the north, power line generally on the west, and then fifty, fifty-seventh down on the south side of the city, south side of the edge. Three hundred and twenty-three acres. It has great access to the area. There's also some things that are missing, like residential, as far as uses. So what the proposed land use amendment is going to be, is going to be a transit-oriented development land use designation specific to Uptown in our comp plan, our future land, future land use element. In the county's plan, it's going to be activity center land use. The intent is the same, as you could see listed there on the screen, is some requirements in order to do a transit-oriented development land use designation. We're going to be meeting that. We already adopted that in our Uptown Master Plan, but this will also be part of the land use plan amendment. So part of the application is you have to do a land use analysis so you can identify your program of uses for the, for the project area. What you see on the screen, the very top line of the table is what's existing. The second line that's bold is the additional program that is being proposed by this land use plan amendment. And then the bottom line is the total of those combined. So what staff did is we looked at underutilized properties. We looked at uses that weren't in the area, again, like residential. We did a, had a market, a basic market study done for office and commercial based on that residential demand. And we came up with the program that you see before you. Once you do that analysis, you look at its impact on public services. And as you can see on the screen, adding residential definitely has an impact on park space for obvious reasons, but some other aspects have gone down. In our analysis, you can see the chart where it says yes and no and the impact on those services. So that was a part of the application we had to go through. I'm going through this pretty quick. The trip analysis that was generated, we looked at what the comprehensive plan could allow, what was out there as far as existing development and then the proposed development. And it's a little counterintuitive because actually the, there was an increase in AM trips in the morning because we're adding residential, but the overall trips for the program actually went down, which is, you would think it'd be the opposite, but that was the result of the analysis that got done. Part of the traffic analysis too is what we have adopted in our master plan and regulations for Uptown, our improvements that are multimodal. It's part of the TOD requirements. You just don't deal with cars. You deal with other modes of transportation. What you have on the screen are a couple of projects that have gone through this process that have implemented those multimodal aspects. So as the area develops and all these projects are developed together, you have different modes all happening together collectively. One aspect, which was the addendum that you received, had to deal with compatibility with the airport. And this is one reason why the item was deferred. Staff did an analysis, worked with airport staff, looked at what the requirements are for the flight path, approach, and so forth, and noise levels, and looking at where the proposed uses were going to be identified. Now, this land use takes all the uses into account. However, the city's zoning, which has been already adopted, restricts those uses in certain areas. So residential is not permitted in certain of the sub-district zoning areas and same thing for park space. So what you received was an addendum with your package for this meeting that had language in there that restricts it a little bit further and talks about this analysis. So we could talk about that at the end if you have questions. Process, you know, we've done a public outreach meeting. We had DRC for the item. We're now before you as the local planning agency. And then we take the next step to commission and so forth. Again, I'm going through this really fast, just given time, so we can take questions. But this is just a quick overview of timeline. And just some good pictures and some projects that have already gone through this process and the zoning. This is Fairfield, which is almost done, I believe, up there. This is a rendering. This is another project that recently got approved. That's at the corner of Cypress and Andrews. This is Avery Project. And this is one that's under review still at the F dot park, park and ride lot for this site. So just a couple of images of what this vision is, you know, starting to look like. And with that, I'll take questions real quick. I do want to hand out a correction to the addendum that was distributed. Where if you look at the addendum, there was underlying language, which is the new language. The comprehensive section was already in your application, but on the second page, there was a correction to the very last paragraph where it starts off saying the map. So I'm going to read it into record so you have it correctly. The map below depicts the two thousand and fifteen FXE airport noise levels, flight paths, the loop of boundaries, uptown zoning districts, and the potential park open space. The change happens in the next sentence, but it should be noted that the park open space areas are shown as potential park open space because they are currently undeveloped areas within the loop of boundaries. They're not zone park nor deed restricted as such. And I'm going to hand this out so you all could see the difference in the language. And I went through that really fast, so I'll take questions because I'm sure you're, there are some. Yes.
Could you go back to the, that one right there? Okay. They're obviously not parks now. There's no money to buy them to make parks. Why are you contemplating that those will be the parks?
This is similar to the Uptown Master Plan where it does a conceptual plan, which I think is in here as well. These areas were identified in the conceptual plan as potential. Doesn't, that's all it is, is potential. It's privately owned on the east side, the one located on the east, the sliver that's on the west side or northern side is owned by the airport. It actually is owned by the airport. It's not publicly owned or deed restricted as park at all. However, the airport does own it, so it is city-owned.
Okay, well then let's go to the slide that shows the deficit of parks. Oh, what, next one, next one. Okay, recreation and open space. Population increases demand, the overall city supply meets the LOS requirements, new open space part of the master plan. It's part of the master plan, but you can't guarantee that it will be parks.
Exactly. So part of the Uptown zoning district requirements is an open space requirement tied to the project, the development as a whole. And those, in the land use plan amendment, you'll see language in the analysis that was done for parks that that component that's provided on private property, but deed restricted, or not deed restricted, but given public access as a park or open space can count towards our parks. That's what we're proposing in the land use plan amendment.
So you're anticipating that as projects are developed, they will dedicate a portion of their property to open space?
It's not dedication. It's a requirement for open space per the project. So that in itself, they'll be providing open space. The open spaces will then have public access on it. That's part of the requirements in the Uptown zoning.
So again, when someone develops a private property, there will be open space requirements.
Yep.
And they will then be required to make that open space available to the public.
Yes.
Understood.
Just not, just not deed restricted.
That's fine, as long as it's open and accessible. Okay. My next question is, if you go to the, the analysis of the increase in the development density, right there, right there. Okay. That's a significant increase in the development density. Okay, my next question is if you go to the, um, the analysis of the increase in the development density, right there, right there, okay. That's a significant increase in the development density. You're doubling the amount of industrial space, you're, uh, increasing commercial, you're increasing office space by a lot, and residential by an awful lot. My concern is, in your analysis, did you look at the impact that this would have on the demand for water and sewer?
Yes, that's part of the analysis of the application.
And where is that? And what is your analysis?
Not an impact on the service area. Now, the service area here is not the city. Uh, let me take that back. A portion of it is the city, a small portion of the south side of Cypress Creek Road. The rest is county. So it's county service area for the most part.
So the county will be providing water and sewer?
For the majority of the area, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Chair?
Microphone. No other questions. We'll open up to public hearing. Does anybody want to be heard on this?
Thank all these lovely ladies who have been coming out on so many of our things, and you all are wonderful, really.
Lovely lady.
Oh, I didn't mean to leave you.
Mary, if you want to make a motion, go ahead and make a motion.
I could have lost my cheat sheet here. No, I didn't. Uh, I'm making a motion on approval to recommend. Hold on, I need a case number, Jim.
Uh, UDP L two-three-zero-zero-one.
Yeah, two-three-zero-zero-one. That's how it ends. To amend the City of Florida Comprehensive Future Plan Use, blah, blah, blah. Yes, and I'm coming down and saying the board finds that the text amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion to recommend approval of the amendment to the comprehensive.
Yes.
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 Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
What about me? Don't I get to vote?
Chair Weyman.
Yes, thank you. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before we go further into the last three items, um...
Uh, Jim?
Yeah, I had a motion. Is this the right time to bring this up, or did you want to do something else?
Can I just ask, Jim, Jim, do you want the, the meeting dates approved by the board today?
That's one of the three things I was going to address. Oh, you're trying to keep him here is what you're doing. Um, we, we all received a circulation earlier today with a request for a motion to reconsider an item that we heard. I think it was, what was it, back in October?
It was in October.
Case number PLR nineteen oh-six-two. Ms. Toothaker is, uh, on behalf of the applicant asking us respectfully to reconsider the motion.
Can I just say that I went back through the minutes after I received this letter, and I know that my, my memory was that we encouraged deferral several times so that they, the neighbors could meet with, um, the applicant. And I just want to make sure that if I move to, um, to, hold on, reconsider, um, it doesn't bind us in any way. I just want to ask you that question. It doesn't bind us in any way when we do hear the case.
So this, so this is what I would recommend, is that, um, you do the motion to reconsider, and then your motion to, to deny, which, which you moved, would be on the table and that you withdraw it. And then someone will put forward a motion to defer, and that way it does not prejudice the case.
Motion to consider, motion to deny, motion to defer.
Motion to reconsider, withdrawal of your motion to deny, and then the motion to defer.
Right.
And I believe the date is...
Okay. No.
March twenty.
You can tell I'm like fading fast here, so let me do this quickly.
We'll walk you through.
Can I just move to reconsider deferral of site plan level three development permit for River Oaks Cluster Development?
Uh, the case number?
Case number PLR one nine oh-six-two. Here, you want me to give you this?
As heard at the October eighteenth.
As heard at the October eighteenth, um, meeting, which minute we approve tonight.
Twenty, twenty-three.
Yeah. Just whatever he says, just put it in.
You got it. We're there.
Second.
Who's the second? Patrick?
Patrick, yeah.
I have a discussion.
Go ahead.
It, it, and at any point in any of these three motions, should we also include for the purpose of going, uh, of further consideration or further participation with the community? Because that's the reason we're doing this, right?
Yeah, and I was going to do that. I was actually planning. I went back and I made the motion. You seconded the motion in October. And so, um, yes, that is why I want to do it, because that was our whole thing.
You can ask those questions once we...
Thank you.
I thought we did that on the motion to defer, though.
Thank you, thank you.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't want to mess this up.
All right, so I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Spence, but she can ask those questions once we reopen this and before she withdraws her motion, correct?
No, she'll do that when you are considering the motion to defer. So she'll just, after you take the vote on the motion to reconsider, uh, the, uh, motion to deny will be withdrawn, and then as part of the consideration for the motion to defer, you'll make those, uh, statements.
Well, if she, if we vote for a motion to deny and it passes, and she says, no, I'm not going to meet with the neighborhoods anymore, now we have to meet with her down the road, where to me that would be a consideration to withdraw the denial. Maybe my, my mind works backwards.
Okay.
Okay, there, I'm just going to put as part of the motion that I am making this motion so that the applicant, um, will ha, will ha, that the applicant will meet with the neighbors.
Mary, let's get the motion for, let's, let's get the motion for reconsideration voted on, then you can go down that road.
That's what I think. All right, that's what I think.
They have to vote.
So this is the motion to reconsider.
Right, Chair, just one point of clarification. Her withdrawal of the motion to deny is not a vote. It, so what happens when the motion to reconsider is passed, that you, the, uh, the board is placed in the same position as they were before they called the question on the motion to, um, motion to deny.
Understood. Now, understand.
All right.
Thank you. Quick, let's get the vote in.
And this is a motion for defer.
No, this is a motion to reconsider.
To reconsider.
Quicker you do it, the quicker we move on to the second question.
And we had to wait till nine-thirty.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamanu?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weyman?
Yes. With that, we are reconsidering it, and so Mary Furtig was the person who made the motion. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So she's the one that would have to...
And I'm withdrawing my motion.
So the motion has been withdrawn.
So you may entertain any motion at this time.
I'm sorry?
You may entertain any motion at this time.
So now I'm moving...
Motion to defer until March twentieth, twenty-twenty-four?
Are there any conditions?
With the, with the understanding, with the requirement that the applicant will meet with the neighborhoods to have the discussion regarding how they can maybe come to, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll just leave it at the requirement that you all meet.
I, and I, and I've already spoken to the president of the Neighborhood Association because I wanted to let them know that we were, that we were proposing this, and they were very pleased to hear from us, so it's my intention to meet with them in January.
Just so you know, because I know you weren't here, and but I know we discussed this, and I know we haven't voted yet, Chairman, but, um, we did, we did, you know, encourage that repeatedly the night that we heard this in October.
I actually was here. I, I sat through it.
Okay, sorry about that.
So I, I, I wasn't, I wasn't a participant at the time, but I was here and I heard it, and, and I, I, I agree that neighbor, neighborhood meetings are required, and we're happy to commit to that.
Marilyn, do you have a comment?
No, if this all works out the way we hope it's going to work out, this is a good thing.
That's a comment. I thought you said no. All right, would somebody like to make a motion for a deferral?
No, I think I did. I think I made it.
Very quickly, can you just, um, can you clarify, Ms. Furtig withdraws her original motion? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. So the original motion made, made on October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. It was a motion to, uh, deny.
Okay.
And I'm replacing it with a motion to defer till March twenty-twenty-four with the requirement that the applicant and the neighbors meet.
So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, who was second?
I'll second.
Call the vote, please.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamanu?
Yes.
Chair, uh, Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weyman?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, going on to the next item, Communication to the City. Jay, do you have anything?
I do. I do, I do. Um, okay, so, um, so this is something that, um, I think is really important and why I'm making, bringing this up here at the Planning and Zoning Board, which obviously is the planning authority for the city. I just want to, this is about the train versus tunnel discussion that's in the news and been going on for years now. Um, you know, in January, um, my, my issue is that we, there's been tunnel vision, to, to make a funny pun here, on whether or not we should have a train or a tunnel. And we're missing on a bigger picture here, which is that the, what FDOT has been studying, um, is crossing of the New River, and while that's really important, uh, we also have, you know, major thoroughfares, east-west thoroughfares, that when there are twenty-six trains a day, um, are going to be adversely impacted. Um, so here's just something that I wrote, uh, two years ago in January twenty-twenty-two, um, to, to FDOT. I said, while we fully support a commuter rail system in our great county, we absolutely cannot push commuter rail at the expense of the existing commuters that we have today. Fort Lauderdale's the central core of Broward County is by far the most dense city here. There has been a renaissance in our downtown with seven thousand units having been built in the last seven years and an additional thirteen thousand more units in the pipeline. Further, our downtown is bounded by two major thoroughfares, Sunrise and Dave Boulevard and Davie Boulevard, with total combined average daily traffic exceeding a hundred and fifty thousand vehicles per day. The fact that FDOT is studying a new river crossing rather than a downtown Fort Lauderdale crossing, which would simultaneously address Sunrise and Davie Boulevards, is a colossal mistake. The idea that we would spend over five hundred million dollars to build a structure, either bridge or tunnel, that would fall just short of two of our major downtown thoroughfares is shortsighted, nonsensical, and mind-boggling. We must consider not only the cost of construction, but also the negative externalities imposed on society, including the enormous adverse impact on our existing commuters by not also addressing Davie and Sunrise, Sunrise Boulevards with this proposal. So with that, I'd like to move that, and, and I'm happy to have discussion first, but my motion will be that we, um, move to communicate to the city commission that we must also prioritize the crossing of major east-west thoroughfares, including Sunrise, Broward, and Davie Boulevard, as part of any bridge or tunnel development over the New River on the Florida East Coast Railway, uh, right away.
I second.
Oh, okay.
Sounds great.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to go there and to, to say this because we've been so, and I'll, and I'll finish with this, and I'll finish with this. We've been so focused on bridge or tunnels, and I, I, if it's a tunnel, that'd be great. If it's a bridge, maybe I'll hit myself in the head. But if it's a bridge that ends right before Davie Boulevard and Sunrise Boulevard, I'm going to hit myself in the head every day for like sixty years, and so I, I'm begging you, please, let us make this also a focus and a priority.
So, so, so let me, before everybody starts getting all jacked up to make motions and seconds and passes, and I saw Mary and Marilyn yesterday at the afternoon session, and there's a tremendous amount of conversation that's already happening as it relates to that. And I would strongly suggest that you spend a little time and go over to the MPO and maybe even try to get with Greg Stewart or whatever, that is studying that very thing. So, you know, I, I, I don't want to just send stuff to the city commission. What you're bringing up is paramount, and it's very important, and it's being addressed is what I'm saying. So I suggest that you maybe look into what is being suggested. Right now, a tunnel or a bridge is so far away. They can't figure out how far, how long, how high, how deep, which all depends, which all dictates where it lands, and then ultimately it's about the almighty dollar. So I'm sure what you're suggesting is either if it's a tunnel that we go under Sunrise, and it's got to come out somewhere, and it's got to go under Davie, and it's got to come out somewhere. If it's a bridge, you know, these things, it, it all boils down to money. We saw that yesterday. So, so, you know, I can, I can promise you that it, there is a lot of discussion left on this, and I too am concerned about what you're concerned about. Alls I'm saying is before you have five elected officials, which to my knowledge, none of them have an engineering degree, um, weigh in on what you're...
Except Warren Sturman.
And, oh, okay.
His undergraduates?
He's an open-hearted, he's an open-hearted.
His undergraduate degree is engineering.
I just want to, I just want to state that this is, I'm not somebody that's just watched this. I'm not somebody that's just watched this like in the newspaper. I've been part of, of the early commuter, like, study groups. I've been like part of all the public participation. Like, there's been so much discussion about a bridge or a tunnel that nobody, maybe now they're talking about it more at the MPO and they have some of that concern, but I, I think it's important for us as a, as a planning authority to refocus the city on not just tunnel or bridge, but that what, whatever we're considering, address not just the river, but also our major east-west thoroughfare.
So Jay, Jay, can I...
Do you have more conversations?
Yeah, I have one thing I want to say to him, and then I, I think, Jay, that this is a good conversation. I don't think we should pass anything tonight, but I do think you should take Mike up on his suggestion to go to the MPO, because in fact, they are looking at undercuts, overcuts, some kind of a cut that would address this. There's a cost to each one. And that's come up because if you've listened to the commissioner's talk, anybody who's not in that, in that little area is like, well, what about my area? I've got a problem too. So I think there is some awareness, but maybe what would help us to frame this is to find out what areas could most realistically be addressed and try to advocate for that.
Actually, I, actually, I respectfully disagree.
Okay.
I think that this is a policy issue. This is not an engineering issue, okay? Whether it's a tunnel, a bridge, how much it costs, how much it doesn't, because that, that, that all has to be resolved, okay? But as, uh, as a matter of planning, okay, I think it's very appropriate for us to say, hey, guys, whatever you do, you know, you should be considering the fact that the additional train traffic affects the east-west, uh, streets significantly, and we should not be just talking about, and you should be, you should, you should be addressing it. And whatever you do, don't forget that you could also make some significant improve, you should make some significant improvements in the east-west, um, uh, vehicular traffic. It's a policy, to me, it's a policy decision.
I was just saying, some of those conversations are underway, so to just kind of guide us.
But I don't trust that. I, I frankly don't trust that some of those discussions are underway. There's a lot of talk, but it is certainly, in my opinion, it is certainly not the focus of these people right now. They're all into...
Right, so I was just suggesting that maybe Jay, on our behalf, but not breaking sunshine, um, could get, gather the information and bring it back next month, and then, like you did on Water Trail.
Jay, Jay is...
I made my, I made my motion. I'd like for us to please vote on it, but I want to say one last thing, which is that I, there's the different bridge options. Everyone agrees the short bridge is not going to happen. The medium and the large bridges, they were going to end literally right there in front of Broward and Davie Boulevard. It's stupid. Grow it ten percent. Add another hundred million instead of five hundred million. Make it six hundred versus a three billion dollar tunnel. I don't care, but let's not block the road off.
Jay, Jay, can somebody second your motion?
Yes. Yeah, I did.
Sherry.
Good.
Yeah. Comment.
Thank you. Um, I, I tend to, it's not that I disagree with, um, your sentiment, because I don't. There has to be a lot of focus. I, I just, I'm not thinking that it is perhaps timely for this board. I really liked, uh, Mary's idea that you jump in with two feet, uh, and, and talk to MPO, and we, maybe we could crystallize our policy based on that. I'm personally not prepared to do that tonight, not that I disagree. I'm just not prepared to do that.
And having sat there for five hours or six hours or however many hours yesterday and the tension in that room, I just, I, I think timing-wise, another month might put us in a better place.
So let's vote on it, and we'll see where it goes.
But I do support it, Jay.
So does anybody else have a comment before we vote on it? All right, call a motion. Call the question, sorry.
Do I need to say what the motion was?
You got it.
I think you got it, yeah.
It's on video.
It's on video.
Don't start with me.
Mike's going to vote now.
He's got it written down if he wanted, but anyway.
Ms. McCartney?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
No.
Ms. Mamanu?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
No.
Ms. Furtick?
No.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Wayman?
No.
I think that knows one.
I'll just make it again next month, it's all right.
Good.
Real quick, please, Chair, we need you to vote on the twenty twenty-four calendar.
Any other communications, I'm sorry?
I don't want to lose sight of, you have to vote on your twenty twenty-four calendar.
Anything good for the city?
Yes, I do.
See? You're trying to rush us out of here. You got to know your own.
I'm ready to go.
We're going to have breakfast over at Smitty's.
I would just like to have some clarification on the impact of the city commission voting to extend all of our terms to four years. Can you please tell me what impact that has on us, because four years from now, I got to make some plans, you know?
Okay, so what the commission did was they adopted an ordinance to align the board terms, or what their intent is, to align the board terms with the terms of the elected officials of the city commission. So they've only changed the ordinance itself, changing the three-year term to a four-year term. They changed the time period for the election of the chair from June to?
December.
To December. That does not impact you as existing board members, because the resolutions that appoint you specify your terms of office. There are specific time periods established in the resolution. What I've advised the commission at the meeting is that we'll bring a resolution back to add a year to each of your terms of office. Now, that does not align you with the terms of office of the elected officials, and so through attrition, when they seek to replace the board members in the future, those individuals will be appointed to terms that perfectly align with those of the elected officials.
Doesn't that run the risk of having empty seats? In other words, if my term ends in June, given the one-year extension, and you can't appoint another person until December to align it, isn't that a problem?
Oh, no, you can, they can appoint, once your terms are completed or expired, they can appoint the person, but that person won't get the complete four years.
They'll get more than four years, in that example.
No, they'll get less.
Less than four years.
You all are, if the city commission approves the extension of your terms, we'll get four years, or your existing term will be expanded, so it wasn't just three years, it would have been four years. And whomever is appointed after you, their terms will align with the new terms of office.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other communications to the city or for the good of the city? Good, let's vote on the twenty twenty-four Planning and Zoning Board calendar. Everybody look at it, anybody have a conflict?
Yeah, we didn't even look at it, but we were moving it. We figured we'd resolve conflicts next year.
I approve.
That's a good strategy.
We need a motion, a motion and a vote, please.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Motion by Patrick, second by Brad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to go home? Aye.
Thank you.